Crescent City, thank you for being here this evening. Madam Deputy Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Councilmember Burns.
Present.
Councilmember Westfall.
Here.
Councilmember Slert.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Here.
And Mayor Shalhoub.
I'm here, thank you. Okay. Mr. Apperson, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, God indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. We just came out of a two-hour closed session. Mr. Black, could you please report out of any final actions taken?
Yes Mayor, the council adopted a motion moved by Councilmember Burns, seconded by Councilmember Slert, and passed on a four-to-zero vote with Councilwoman Westfall having removed herself or recused herself on this particular issue. The motion pertained to the city's response to a lawsuit filed by a variety of parties. The lead plaintiff is Walland Construction. The defendants are the city of Crescent City and Rod Butler as in his capacity as Crescent City Clerk. And further defendants designated in the lawsuit as real parties in interest, Donna Westfall and Douglas Westfall. This complaint was served on the city last week, and the motion was to direct the city attorney to respond to the lawsuit as follows: that the city of Crescent City and Rod Butler as city clerk will respond to the suit by informing the court that we do not intend to actively participate in the lawsuit or to defend the lawsuit, but we will abide by the orders of the Superior Court of the State of California and follow the judge's direction.
Thank you.
And just informationally, the nature of the suit is, it's a suit against the initiative on the reduction of sewer rates.
Thank you very much. Okay, we are going to move on to a very proud day for the city of Crescent City. We are going to administer the oath of office to our newest sergeant for the Crescent City Police Department, Mr. Eric Apperson. I'm going to bring Doug Plack forward, and before he actually does that, I'd like him to...[252.15][252.15](laughter) No, before you administer the oath, I'd like you to tell us about the process that Mr. Apperson had to go through, a little bit about how he was chosen. Thanks.
Thank you. The process that Eric Apperson went through was not just a written test and he passes and becomes a sergeant. It is a combination of different types of process that allows me to be able to have a supervisor, which would be in the direct reflection of being second or third in command of the police department. It starts out with a written test specifically for sergeant's position, which has been acquired by the city. It's not a post-document or test. After he successfully passed that, then the next phase was a written assessment of what his idea would be to be a good, solid supervisor by a series of scenario questions that were offered to him to be able to tell us exactly how he would proceed by dealing with the direction and the supervision of officers. Then finally, the oral board becomes, where this particular oral board was comprised of Chief Janik from the Gold Beach Police Department, Commander for the Crescent City Area Command of CHP, Lieutenant Dave Peterson, as well as Lieutenant Donnie Dodson from the Brookings Police Department. All three of these individuals were not known to Eric Apperson, and so therefore Eric, as well as another candidate, did go for the testing, and Eric was the one that come out on top on all three of those exercises.
Thank you. I just think that that's something to, it's noteworthy, and I know that it's something he's been working on for quite a while, and been encouraged to move forward because he's just such an outstanding employee, so I just wanted to note that, so thank you.
Thank you very much for that time. So, at this time, I would like to have Eric Joseph Apperson join me here at the podium, please. Honorable Crescent City Councilmembers, staff, distinguished guests, I would like to introduce to you the newest sergeant of the Crescent City Police Department, Eric Apperson. Eric has just successfully completed the sergeant's process that I just finished explaining to you what consisted of it. Since being at the Crescent City Police Department in 2001, Eric has acquired the reputation of being dedicated and committed to the community, as well as the police department itself. He has been instrumental in the progress of the Explorer Program, which has certainly benefited the city of Crescent City at a tune of $40,000 in savings since the Explorers have donated over 4,400 hours of community service to this community, and that's all because of Eric's leadership. He's administering the School Resource Officer position, in where he has taken it to new heights, to where the level of expertise and commitment for the School Resource Officer has maintained. The first coordinator of the Crime-Free Multi-Housing Program was Eric. He's a train-the-trainer, so he is very up-to-date on the rules and requirements that apartment complexes need to abide by, and he is training the other officers that are involved in that program as well. He's progressed up to being a field-training officer as well, and now sergeant. He has shown that his communication and interpersonal skills are his strongest traits, and he consistently is improving on them through the experience he has gained by being placed in an acting sergeant position for the last nine months as well. He uses his creativity and innovative ideas to solidify the department. Eric is now ready to embark on his new venture of being a supervisor, being a sergeant. As he progresses, his honesty, straightforwardness, and integrity will become the cornerstone of the expectation of all the officers of your police department. With these attributes in mind, I'm very proud and pleased to be able to offer Eric a position of sergeant on the Crescent City Police Department. Eric has requested that his wife, Kyoko, to pin on his badge, and if Kyoko, Apperson would please come up here and stand to the left of her husband. Okay, turn and face me, raise your right hand. "I," your name.
I, Eric Apperson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
And allegiance to the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of California.
Of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
For purpose of evasion.
For purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Kyoko, if you please pin the badge on you. Eric? To the Crescent City citizens, I present to you for the first time Sergeant Eric Joseph Apperson of the Crescent City Police Department.[686.32][686.32](applause) Eric will be in the foyer, if you want to go out there and talk with him for a little bit, and ask him about the process, or where he would like to take the department as far as his direction is concerned, but out there will be fine.
Before you do so, I'd like to give the council an opportunity to address Eric. So if there's any comments from the council?
I'd just like to offer, Eric's had some outstanding achievements in our community. He's a part of the Crescent City family, and this fills an important prior void, so welcome.
Congratulations.
I'm just proud of you and glad that you're with the police department. I know you're, you know, you've just stepped up all the way around, and I congratulate you, and I'm really glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Glad to see you up and about.
You too.
I'd like to thank you and your wife for doing this.
Well, Eric, I am extremely proud of him. I've known him for about five years now, and I think the most important growth that I've seen in him in the past five years is that he's believed in himself, and he has set goals for himself and become a better person because of that. And you met a lovely young lady and married her, and I'm so happy for the two of you. You're going to be brand-new parents in a couple months of a little Cub fan.[793.66][793.66](laughter) One of the first things Eric said to me when he told me about, he's all, "I already bought", what's it called, "a onesie", you know, for the Chicago Cubs, so I just, I think your leadership skills have grown to new heights, and I just respect you, and I'm so happy to have you on our team out there taking care of our kids, so thank you to you both.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Okay, we're going to move on to, actually, we're going to table number three and move on to item number four, which is to approve and read a proclamation of the city of Crescent City designating April 10th, 2010 as Junior Miss Day. I think I say this every year, but this is a special proclamation for me because I directed the pageant for 10 years and have personal knowledge on, of what an impact the scholarship pageant has on the young girls that participate. So, we have here tonight Barbara Lopez to accept, so if you want to go ahead and come up? Barbara has been a volunteer for the program for many years. Yeah, I think probably the last year that I directed the pageant is when you started, and we have a very fond name of our volunteer ladies, and they're called Mother Hens. And basically, what that means is they mentor one of the young girls and help them through the entire process, and in the process become a friend, and sometimes those friendships last for years and years and years, and that's, it's pretty special, so thank you. So this is a proclamation of the City Council of Crescent City, California, designating April 10th, 2010 as Junior Miss Day. Whereas the annual Junior Miss Program is sponsored by the Crescent City J.C.s, and whereas the Junior Miss Program is a scholarship program for young women in high school and is a competitive, success-oriented event, and whereas these young women are not only evaluated on scholastic achievement, but on talent, self-expression, physical fitness, and a personal interview with a panel of judges, and whereas the Junior Miss Program is unmatched in its goal of encouraging young women and its emphasis on showing what our youth strive to accomplish today, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of Crescent City hereby proclaims April 10th, 2010 as Junior Miss Day and encourages all citizens to join in wishing success to every class of 2011 participant in their present and future endeavors and in recognizing the hard work, drive, and accomplishments of these young women. So Barbara, do you want to just give us a little, just brief, how many girls are participating this year, and that'd be great?
Well, this year we have eight girls, and as always, they're wonderful, they're a breath of fresh air, they're smart, they're dedicated, and they just make it such a pleasure to be a part of the program. I'm very fortunate to be a part of the program, and I'm a Mother Hen, and as you said, you really gain a friendship and a lifelong commitment with this, you know, program. And I have here Brittany, and she is our reigning Junior Miss from last year, and thank you very much for this opportunity, and we appreciate the city for recognizing this.
Brittany, would you, do you want to say anything about the program or your experience, just briefly?
This experience was really amazing. I made really good friends. I got to learn girls that were in my grade, but I didn't really get to know them until I did the Junior Miss process, and it was really wonderful to be able to just challenge myself and be able to get scholarship money while doing it.
Great, thank you, congratulations. All right. Okay, moving on to item number five, approve and read a proclamation and recognition of the Crescent City Delnarct County Nature and Heritage Week, formerly the Illusion Goose Festival, formerly the, kind of incorporating the Red, California Redwood Coast Birding Trail, I think also including maybe the Wildflower Show, and so it's become a bigger and better event, I think, and with more volunteers, it'll be even more of a success. And I've asked my fellow councilwoman, Catherine Murray, to read this proclamation.
So, we have Rick Kaiser and Rick Bennett here for this, right? Would you want to come up?
She's really not asking you to, she's going to tell you.[1141.82][1141.82](laughter) Gee, oh yeah, yeah.
Get to share in the limelight. Proclamation and recognition of Crescent City Delnarct Nature and Heritage Week. Whereas Crescent City and Delnarct County are home to an extraordinary natural environment containing some of California's most beautiful coastline, wild rivers, and the world's tallest trees, and whereas Crescent City and Delnarct County are home to the Talawa and Urok Indian tribal people who record thousands of years of rich cultural heritage, and whereas Crescent City and Delnarct County have two historic lighthouses and a powerful history of maritime events including recovery from natural disasters, and whereas Crescent City and Delnarct County have recorded thousands of native plant species and more bird species than 23 other states and nine Canadian provinces, provinces, I can't say it, whereas the California Redwoods Blue and Redwoods Bird and Nature Festival, formerly the Illusion Goose Festival, held in Crescent City at the Cultural Center on the second weekend of May celebrates its natural and cultural heritage, and whereas the Ruby Van Devee, Van Deveeter, Wildflower Show held in Crescent City on the third weekend of May celebrates the county rare botanical legacy with hundreds of native plants and wildflowers on display at the county fairgrounds, and whereas both of these events held a weekend apart promote the rich natural and cultural heritage of Crescent City and Delnarct County, and whereas during the week between both major events, there will be numerous nat, nature, cultural and culture and histor, history events and activities held throughout the community that highlight and celebrate all of the above. Therefore, the city of Crescent City takes action to officially acknowledge the week between the California Redwoods Bird and Nature Festival and the Ruby Van Devee, Van Deveeter Wildflower Show as Nature and Heritage Week to serve as a forum to celebrate our community's natural and cultural heritage. Now therefore, the Crescent City, now therefore, the City Council of Crescent City hereby proclaims the week of May 7th through May 16th, 2010 as Nature and Heritage Week and encourages all citizens to partake in this, in its activities and celebration. In witness thereof, I have hereby and to set my hand and cause a seal of the city of Crescent City to be affixed this 15th day of March, 2010.[1309.04][1309.04](applause)
Thank you very much.
Would either of you care to say anything?
Well, instead of having just two separate events on those two weekends, we decided just to roll it all into one and have a party celebrating where we live and who we are for one week, and thanks to the council. Rick?
Yes, sir. Is the poster? Or is it?
Give it to Rod. Thank you. Well, I know that Mr. Bennett has been extremely important in the process of creating this Wildflower Show, which celebrates Ruby Van Deveeter and our beautiful park, and...
Part of the celebration will be a rededication of the Ruby Van Deveeter Park. I know the name is tough to pronounce sometimes, but Ruby herself wanted it Van Deveeter with a double E, she wrote it out with two Es, but it really is only one. But anyhow, we appreciate it, and we look forward to having a very successful week of nature, and perhaps we'll draw some people into Delnarct County, and I know all the people here will begin to, again, appreciate the many, many things that we have here, including the wildflowers, the trees, the ocean, mountains, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
One of the extraordinary things about Delnarct County that I learned through the process of being on the founding board for the California Redwoods Birding Trail is that our county has over 400 registered species of birds, which is more than the entire state of Oregon, so that's really something to celebrate. So, thank you, gentlemen. I know a lot of work goes into this. Thank you Catherine for reading that. Okay, we're going to move on to item number six, consent calendar for our minutes from March 1st and February 22nd, city-county meeting, approval of warrant claims, March 2nd through the 15th, and bi-weekly payroll reports paid March 5th.
I would move Madam Mayor to approve the meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second.
Are you the whole consent calendar or just the minutes?
The whole consent calendar.
All those in favor?
Well, wait a second. There's a correction.
On?
The minutes from March 1st, page four, line six. Councilmember Westfall asked for grand jury investigation into her belief that the bid was fixed regarding the wastewater treatment plant. It's not my belief, it should be the allegation.
Hold on a second, let me catch up to where you're at.
Okay.
Item six...
Page four, line six.
Page four. Oh, this is the city-county meeting, I'm sorry. Looking at the wrong... I guess those minutes are first. Okay now, go ahead and, could you restate what the, what you believe the error is?
Grand jury investigation into her belief should be changed to into the allegation that the bid was fixed.
We haven't received an actual formal allegation.
I don't believe I said, it was my belief that the bid was fixed, I believe I said the allegation. So I'd like the minutes to reflect that.
Which, okay, but could you please explain what the allegation is that you're referring Is it your belief that the bid is fixed, or an allegation that someone else made that presented to us, or is it your allegation, or...
It's the allegation someone else presented to me, so I'm concerned.
Okay, so someone presented an allegation to you?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Black?
Yes.
Are these minutes, are these verbatim, or...
Not specifically verbatim, I listened to them as I'm typing them, and I felt the word allegation. I don't recall specifically if the word allegation was used, but those were my words stating that it was her belief because of the fact of generally what you're stating.
Yeah, I think the minutes should reflect what was actually said, and then if someone wants to amend what they said, if they maybe thought they could express it better in a different way, that becomes part of these minutes.
Okay.
So, but the minutes are intended, you don't, the minutes are a record of history, the history of what was said that night, and so they can be amended, they, I mean, the statement can be amended by the person, but that becomes part of the night's...
If she feels like what she really meant was something different?
I'm not saying that Councilwoman Westfall is incorrect. I don't remember what she said, but I think she has a right to have the minutes reflect what she said, and so I would, I would suggest that we ask your deputy clerk to go back and listen to that part and then put it in, and we would keep in mind, and make what Ms. Westfall said tonight part of these minutes, that she feels it should, it should read the allegation instead of her...
The allegation that she received.
Absolutely, and I will be happy to do that, I will listen to it again.
Thank you. Is there anything else? No? Okay, can I get a motion?
We already have one.
Or actually, I have one, sorry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Okay, moving on to item number nine, we're going to adjourn to the Housing Authority, and please note that all five councilmembers are present, and I'm going to open it up to public comment. Any member of the audience is invited to address the Housing Authority on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Crescent City Housing Authority. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there, Mr. Miles?
My name's Richard Miles, I am a resident of Crescent City. At the last city council meeting, Charles Slert put something on the agenda, and that's was the subject about tenant landlord relationships and a business is not providing services to their renters. After doing some studying, after an attorney, Mrs. Dickey, supported what I said, I deeply believed the housing... believe the Housing Authority, since it has hired a person to do mitigation for you, may want to contact the HUD office in San Francisco to see if the city is neglectful in not using our mediator to resolve tenant landlord complaints. I'd like to make the suggestion that the cost factor could be mitigated. If a person has a complaint, he lodges it with the Housing Authority that whoever loses would pay the mitigation fee. For years, this city has neglected a need in this community. And it needs to stop. People have rights. The city has a role in protecting those rights. I think that's what Charles was trying to tell you people last week. And for some reason, and I don't know what, what the tenure is here, it just floats over everybody's head. And I'm getting to the point, if I don't get some things fixed where I live in a reasonable amount of time, I'm going to do something about it. Thank you.
Mr. Miles, do you live in HUD?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Let me remind you, but Mrs. Dickey said, I don't have to live in HUD to make a complaint.
No, you don't. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move on to the consent calendar for the meeting minutes of February 16th and warrant claims, February 17th through March 15th.
We approve consent calendar.
Second that. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Passes, oh, I'm sorry, opposed?
Aye, sorry.
You're opposed or?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Passes five to zero. We have no housing director's report this evening, but I see our lovely Housing Authority Director, did you have anything to add?
I don't.
No?
Not unless you have questions.
Any questions from the council?
I would just like to follow up. I was wondering if Mr. Black maybe comment through the HUD program. Do we have a mediation process in place that could hear grievances of tenants regarding landlords?
I'm going to defer to Susie because if we do, it's not one that I've been involved in, but it.
We have an advisory board though, right?
We do have an advisory board for the program, for the HCV program. We are the agency that does have, we're a reporting agency that passes out discrimination complaints and gives all of the information as to either a tenant or an owner could, you know, if they're discriminated against. That is not a process to, you know, to field complaints from owners and landlords, that would be a never-ending job. But we do have, you know, we are the agency that hands out the discrimination, you know, forms that the tenants or the owners can fill out and we would, you know, send them on to HUD. So, that's really our only.
If they're on HUD?
No, that's anybody.
Okay.
We are that reporting agency that we do, we provide that service.
Okay, so, Mr. Miles could stop by your office, pick up a discrimination form and fill it out, bring it back to you and you would pass it on to HUD?
Yes, yes, we would.
Thank you.
I think a discrimination complaint is something different than a complaint of.
Mr. Miles?
About housing.
A tenant and housing issues.
There are cities that have offices for, of mediation, community mediation. And usually they're run by some paid staff person, but frequently they use volunteers to act as mediators. But it's a pretty big, I mean, it's a, I think it's a fair, fairly good-sized undertaking. It's not something that you just do, you know, willy-nilly. I think it would take a fair amount of background staff work. I think it would, it would require the identification of responsible personnel and then you'd have to, you'd have to gather data on who would mediate these disputes. And then you'd, probably the biggest decision would be deciding what kind of disputes would you take. Because if you took, if you took disputes initiated by landlords against individual tenants, I think it could become quite overwhelming. If you just took disputes by tenants against landlords, then it becomes kind of one-sided. But remember, it's a mediation, so you can't force either side to do anything. And so, I guess all I'm saying is that if you are interested in this subject matter, you could ask staff to come back with a plan to research it, develop it, the idea, maybe identify some basic funding and see where to go from there.
One thing that's important to understand is the Housing Authority staff, we're not lawyers and we can't give out legal advice. We could be sued for that. So therefore, we're very careful as to the advice that we give out. We do have, it's called California Tenant and Landlord Rights. It's a very good booklet that we, that we provide to people so that they can look up at, you know, about security deposits, about repairs and that sort of thing. And does give legal opinions about that, that we do provide. And it's also on the internet and we can give you that, that contact if you'd like to, to use that. But we would have to refer them to, you know, to a lawyer or to someone like that. They would have to seek that out themselves for those type of, those type of things.
Thank you.
But we do as much as we can, you know, we're limited, we can't give out legal advice. And generally, it's a very, it's an arena of, you know, legality, so we just have to refrain from that. And HUD has, you know, given us that recommendation that, you know, don't enter there, so that's what we have to do.
So, if, without the city paying for a mediator and going through that process, what is a tenant's options if they have a complaint against their landlord?
Primarily, the first, the first remedy that every tenant should employ is try to communicate with their landlord. That's, that's pretty squared away. And then the, the next thing after that is most likely going to be repair and deduct, which means you can make repairs up to one month's rent and just deduct that from your rent. And you can't be evicted if you do that legitimately. Your second remedy would be to go to small claims court or to call for an inspection, a housing inspection, because there's case law that says that if your unit is substandard, then you're allowed to abate your rent until it's brought up to standard. So, there are a lot of, there are a lot of legal avenues for a tenant to take. But once again, the concept of mediation, if this council is interested in pursuing it further, is not a legalistic thing. It's, it's to have a neutral person working between the landlord and the tenant to try to bring the parties together and get resolution so that everybody can move on without a lot of legal entanglement, which I think is what most people's goal in life is. Not everybody, but most people's. So, you know, I think it's a, it's one of those things that would require some effort. The Housing Authority may be a resource to participate. Maybe they would end up having a greater role in terms of like scheduling or recruiting volunteer mediators, et cetera. I don't know. It's, it's up to your management and yourself.
Well, I was just reading, when I read the minutes last time, in the last meeting, Mr. Miles, you stated that you were very happy with your landlord.
Yeah.
So.
I was going to say that. Rubes fallen down.
Okay, so, hopefully you gained a little more insight tonight on what some of your options are.
I was going to give you any.
Okay. Okay, so, thank you, Susie. We have no public hearings this evening. Is there anything else from the council? Seeing none, we're going to adjourn as the Housing Authority and reopen as the Redevelopment Agency. Please note that all five members are present. And I'll open this up to public comment with the same rules as before. Is there any public comment on RDA? Mr. Miles?
On the 26th of this month, at 11:55, an event occurred a number of years ago. And that's our title wave. It's my understanding that at your town hall meeting, that the subject of the landing will be addressed. But I hope Redevelopment Agency, because you guys wear two hats, will make that event on the 26th and the 27th, remember the people that lost their lives. Also, I would hope before that date, an attempt can be made by my city parks people to do a little cleanup down there. Because it's not looking its best. I'm aware that myself and another person will be putting flowers down there again. I hope this agency would do the same thing. I hope it's petty cash. Thank you.
We don't have petty cash.
Well, why not?
But thank you for the, for the suggestion. Okay, is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to close public comment and move on to the consent calendar for our minutes of February 16th and warrant claims paid February 17th through March 15th.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Moving on to business items, approve a tentative funding plan for the fiscal year 2009, 2010, supplemental educational revenue augmentation fund transfer from the RDA. Mr. Butler?
Thank you. Have to get used to hearing yourselves called Madam Chair and members of the Redevelopment Agency Board. And we hope to be initiating more items involving the Redevelopment Agency. And just for the public's benefit, the council puts on a different hat and serves as the governing board of the separate entity, which is the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. And tonight, we're going to be starting with a, an item that we really talked about under the city council business last time, had a fairly lengthy discussion of it, so I'll just give you the overview. The state has once again attempted to solve some of its budget problems in Sacramento by taking funds from local redevelopment agencies. Crescent City is supporting a lawsuit filed by the California Redevelopment Association, which we hope will reverse, we hope will reverse that action in court so that we will not have to contribute any of our local dollars to the state fund this year. But in case that court action is not successful, we do need to have a plan in place for how we are going to pay our share of that money. It works out to about $369,000 for this year. And again, that is Redevelopment Agency funds rather than general fund money. We, Finance Director McDonald and myself recommended last time that we use funds that are available in the city's or the agency's low and moderate income housing fund right now. We have a balance, probably a snapshot of tonight, of close to $1.2 million in that fund. We would have to pay back the low and moderate income housing fund over time if we choose to pay this $369,000 from that fund. But we believe that the best option for this year, in light of the fact that that balance is there and available, would be to use those funds. And so, there is a letter that was part of the agenda package that basically tells our Delnor County Auditor Controller that our plan would be to pay our share of the state. This time it's called, I guess, SERAF or CRAF, Transfer, it used to be called ERAF, to have that, those funds come from our low and moderate income housing fund and then we would pay that back over time. So, that would be the recommendation. Again, we're hoping it doesn't have to be followed through on, but we do have to at least notify the Auditor Controller of that plan.
I'm sorry, did you not do that already?
Yeah, no, we have notified them. Yeah, basically what happened last time was we had this on the regular city council agenda.
I know.
And we wanted to come back, make sure that it was agendized under the Redevelopment Agency. But we wanted to make sure that, yeah, the agency took that action formally, but yes, Ms. Abage did receive the letter.
Yeah. Okay, is there any public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Bring it back to the RDA board.
Do we want a motion to move this forward, just as we did on the council?
I believe so.
Sure. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further questions from the council? Okay, do I need a poll vote on this?
No, not on this item.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Okay, we have two public hearings this evening. The first, approving ordinance number 754 for the city, adopting the Seventh Amendment to the amended disaster redevelopment plan for RDA project number one, extending certain time limits which are applicable there too. Mr. Butler?
Actually, Mayor, can you read the second public hearing as well? We'll do these as a, might be easier to do them as a team.
Sure. The second is ordinance 755, approving and adopting the Fourth Amendment to the RDA project number two, extending certain time limits applicable there too.
Thank you. Yes, this approach by the state to take local funds from the redevelopment agencies unfortunately has a long history, going back to earlier this decade and back into the early 90s as well. And one of the things that the state has done to try to make up partially for taking these local funds is to allow redevelopment agencies to extend the lifetime of the agencies beyond their original life to make up for some of those funds that were, that were taken as part of the state budget solution. In Crescent City, we have two redevelopment agency project areas. One is very old, is actually one of the oldest redevelopment agencies in California, was formed right after the tsunami in 1964. And it's actually so old that it's called the Disaster Redevelopment Plan, which is kind of the old terminology. Then we have a new plan, well, newer, that was formed in 1986, and that is project area number two. The project area number one is basically downtown, older downtown area, a lot of the bid district. Project area two is much larger and includes a lot of the Route 101 corridor, the Hampton Inn Development, Beachfront Park, all the front street. So, it's a much larger and again, newer area. To try to make this four-page report as simple as possible, although I do certainly thank Iris Yang, our new RDA legal counsel in Sacramento, for her assistance and input on all these reports. Basically, what this is doing is recommending that the agency board approve two ordinances which will allow us to take advantage of laws that were passed at the state level. It was SB 1096, to extend the life of our two redevelopment project areas because these funds were taken by the state back in 2004, 2005, and 2005, 2006. And that would take out, that would extend the lifetime of project area one to January 1st, 2012, for the project area itself. And then we would have 10 years beyond that to continue to collect and make payments on debt and collect tax increment, which is the revenue that comes in for redevelopment project areas. The second ordinance would amend project area number two and take its useful life out to the year 2028 for both of those, those elements. The lifetime itself and the amount of time that we have to collect increment and pay debt. So, it's basically just a way for us to hopefully recover some of the revenue that we lost when the state took the revenue earlier to solve their budget problems. And it gives us additional time to conduct redevelopment activities in those two project areas. So, we would recommend that the council approve both of those ordinances. There are some findings that are listed in the ordinance that must be made and that are included as part of the ordinance. You don't have to necessarily verbalize all those findings tonight when you make your motion because they are included in the ordinance. But we would recommend the approval. And again, this will just allow some additional time for us to conduct activities in both of these areas. That concludes my staff report. And if you have any questions, I'll be glad to handle those.
My only concern was that project area one was only being extended through 2012. That doesn't give us, really, it only gives. That doesn't give us, really, it only gives us one additional budget year to try to accomplish anything in that area. And I think that area is in need of projects.
Sure. Yeah, unfortunately, the, the original life of the project, you know, it was only allowed to go a certain number of years, and we've had several extensions which were talked about in the report. There are options, though, it's one reason that Mr. McDonald and I are working so hard to get an RDA financial advisor and consulting team on board. Because one thing we could do, for example, a lot of cities have done this, especially when they have an older downtown project area and then a newer, more successful, larger area that surrounds the downtown, is to merge those two areas into one. That can extend the life, allow you to conduct activities longer in the old original area, and allow some of the resources that are created from the newer area to be used on activities in that older area. So that's one of the first things we're going to be looking at, is does a project area merger make sense for Crescent City?
And do we lose any benefit of having the, one of the oldest RDA areas and, you know, what that means to the city if we merge?
I don't think so. I think basically, we're kind of winding down, you know, from that original plan. There's not a whole lot we can do to extend the life if we were to try to keep it as its own entity. I think personally, based on projects I've been involved in in the past, there's probably a lot more advantage to merge the two than to try to keep that downtown area as a separate entity.
Any questions from the council?
I remember we talked about the merger before, so when would we, we need to start working on that?
Yeah, we expect at the next, be a month from now, so April 19th, the next regular redevelopment agency meeting, to have some recommendations for the council on RDA financial advisor consulting team. And one of their first tasks is going to be doing that analysis.
Did we include this consulting team in the budget?
Yeah, we've got funds for professional services this year between now and June 30th, and then we will also budget in 2010, 2011 for all those professional services, and it'll be a larger amount for next year.
Those come out of the RDA?
That's all RDA, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
I applaud Mr. Butler for having, I think, a positive energy regarding approaching redevelopment agency. For a long time, it seems like it's just kind of been a status quo entity, and I think it could represent an economic engine for us ultimately, so I applaud the efforts.
Any public comment on the ordinance addressing the time extension? Mr. Miles?
I want to thank Mr. Butler, because this has been one of my complaints for months, that this council hasn't been looking at this problem. And I would hope that you would move ahead to combine area one with area two, because there's a growth pattern in this city. But, and I want to say this with a big but, when the redevelopment area one was originally organized, the concept of funding it was done after the title wave. It was supposed to benefit all the community with projects. My understanding after talking to the person that was on the city council at that time, that they knew it wouldn't last forever. They did look, and they formed area two to widen the benefit for the whole population of the community. One reason they did that, according to my friend, was to create jobs for the community. Well, I have to say this. I've seen councils in the past give loans to people that didn't create jobs. They actually gave some loans that the people went bankrupt. A good example of that is the brewery, an empty building. Now, things do happen. But if you extend both of these timeframes and this council, Ms. Murray and Charles and Kelly and Donna, I would hope that in the future, that you would use redevelopment to create jobs in this community. Not low-paying jobs, but for some real jobs. Thank you.
Just like to reflect for the record, we did not give a loan to the owners of the brewery. We gave some grant funding for some landscaping. Is there any, Mr. Miles, please?
Check your facts. You gave...
Mr. Miles, your time is up, thank you. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we're going to come, bring it back to the council. And can I get a motion to approve ordinance 754 and 755, extending the time limits as stated by Mr. Butler for project area one and two?
So moved.
I'm going...
Poll vote, you said?
I'm going to pull the vote. And if, is there anybody on the council that wishes to approve them separately? Okay. Please pull the...
Yes, wait a minute, did we get a second on that?
I'll second.
Vote on them separately.
You need separate motions and a separate vote.
Okay.
I'll withdraw the original motion and make motion to for number...
754.
754.
I'll second that. Okay, please pull the vote.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong.
Yes. And a motion for ordinance 755 for project area two.
I move to approve ordinance number 755 for RDA number two.
I'll second that.
Please pull the vote.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong.
Yes. Thank you. Redevelopment agency items, is there anything from the board? Seeing none, I would just like to state that we are having our workshop on April 12th, 5:00 PM, I believe, for this council to look at the bigger picture of our RDA, what the economic development opportunities are and what the finances could look like, right?
Yeah, actually, Mary, I've heard you mention that a couple of times. April 12th is primarily for annexation, annexation workshop, including the economic aspects of potential annexations. We will do, we will want to do a redevelopment workshop, but I want to wait until we get the consultant on board.
I don't know why I keep having it in my mind that that's the RDA workshop.
Yeah, so Monday, April 12th, annexation.
I apologize. Strike that. Okay, seeing no other comments, we will adjourn and reconvene as the city council and move on to item number 11. We have a public hearing this evening. It is 7:02 PM. We are to consider and approve a resolution, 2010 dash...
Oh, excuse me, 06.
06. Resolution of the city council to assign authority to the city manager to consolidate coastal development permits in which permitting authority is shared with the state coastal commission. Is this going to be a tag team event here? Because I think there's going to be some questions, so...
Sure, we're going to have Mr. Taylor present the report, and he and I will both be available for questions if there are any.
Great.
It's pretty straightforward, like it says in the title. It's just give the city manager authority to consolidate certain coastal development permits. Basically where there's joint jurisdiction, the city and the coastal commission, send one application rather than duplicating the process over...
Eric, could you give us an example of a permit that may fall within the jurisdiction and what that would mean to the council or the city's involvement or less involvement?
Sure. Well, for the example I gave in the report, one, probably there's a small segment of coastal, about 300-foot coastal trail. The majority of that trail falls within the jurisdiction of the coastal commission. A small portion of it falls within the city. So it kind of streamlined the process for us, be helpful for us, just put it as one joint application. And typically, when these things are, say, the city decides on coastal development permit, it's appealed, it's appealed to the commission, it's not appealed back to the city, you know, at that point. Not unheard of, we kind of do these things already. There's a lot of projects that happen that are just within coastal commission jurisdiction where they just go to the coastal commission, so... And if you read the, the other thing is too, a lot of people say, well, this kind of eliminates or, you know, takes away some of the public's opportunity to have input, but the coastal commission has the same process that we do for notifying the public, for allowing them to have their public input. Furthermore, if you read, basically, where the third whereas there, consolidation may only proceed where public participation is not substantially impaired by that review consolidation. So, I mean, it's just for more benign projects, obviously. So, for example, trail will still go to architectural review, the planning commission for architectural review, but that's just the development permit portion of it would just go to the coastal commission. And I would add also that a lot of this language is borrowed from a similar resolution that the county had passed two years ago, they've had it in place. To my knowledge, they haven't had any.
So, you know, when I ask you questions, it's sometimes for myself, but also for the public to understand the process better, but can you tell me an instance, I mean, let's take the same project and tell me what you're having to duplicate?
Basically, you're having to take the whole coastal development, we would go for a local coastal development permit, so that would go for the planning commission. So you have all your reports and everything for that process. Then if that's appealed, then it goes to the city council. And then if that's appealed again, it's appealed to the coastal commission. So it kind of eliminates that first part of it, just take it to the coastal commission and just allow the whole thing to go through and streamline that process. Like I say, it'd be more of these benign type of projects, you know, we would look at these and, you know, obviously something like Boss project wouldn't go through this. It would go through the full, it would go through the full process. So it's kind of for smaller process, we can just streamline it for smaller projects.
So when you say benign, what does that mean to you?
Kind of like a coastal trail, I mean, these are for public use, it's in a public right-of-way, they're for the public benefit, you know, those types of projects.
I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding, maybe less paperwork for you, but I don't, I'm not sure the benefit is there for the public to be able to be part of the process.
Well, this doesn't eliminate the public from being part of the process, though.
They have to then go give their public input to the coastal commission?
Sure. And they can send a letter, or they can go in person, obviously, but letters can be sent to Eureka, to their office down there.
Right, but most of the time they meet...
It's different if people send letters to this council.
Right, but most of the time they meet, it's like San Francisco, Monterey.
Right, but the letters would just go to the Eureka office, and then they take that to their meeting. And they look at that, they'll take all that input. If anything, their, I mean, their process is stricter than ours is, so...
Okay, any other questions from the council?
I guess I would ask, you know, what would your assessments be of the downside of not doing this, proposing to do this streamlined effort?
It just had more work for us in the long run, you know, just...
I mean, the complaints that I get from the public is that there's a bureaucratic burden that seems to be associated with projects.
Sure, it helps streamline, that's what it's for, it helps streamline some of these projects. I mean, obviously permitting can go on, I mean, I've dealt with the Harvard Trail project, we spent over two years in the permitting process on that.
So I guess I'm interested in the idea of the economies and efficiencies, as long as it's not short-circuiting the public process.
Well, I don't see how we're allowing the public to be a part of the process unless they want to go directly to the coastal commission. I mean, that's, that's what I'm getting out of this. And I, I don't, um, I don't, if I were the public, that's not where I'd want to take my input. I'd want my local people listening to what I think about my local community. So, do you understand where I'm coming from?
I understand where you're coming from, but I don't think, like I'm saying, those types of projects probably aren't going to go through this process, is kind of what I'm trying to get at, when we're looking at smaller projects. Another example would be for our tsunami sirens, you know, a small portion of that fall in the city, but the majority of it, you know, falls within the coastal commission's jurisdiction. You know, so we'd be going, we're going to them anyways, and we have to get their permission. And I think we'd all agree that we, sirens, I mean, they're going to go in.
So would the planning department then make the decision of what constituted a more minor project?
Sure, and the ultimate authority lies with the city manager, it's not just up to the planning department on this, so...
And this all would happen before the planning commission?
Sorry, what's that?
Would this all happen before going to a planning commission, or would the...
I think what he's saying is it would not go to our planning commission. That whole process would be removed.
Just for the, for the development permit portion of it, though, I'm saying the architectural review portion would still go, so we would still have to have that approval, there'd still be that public comment on the actual project and the design of the project, we're just talking about the permitting process here.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
My only comment is that when we're trying to expedite things, i.e. trails or sirens, that it makes sense to, for the permitting to be as simple as possible. And the planning commission is still going to be there to hear the plan, that's not going to be done away with, it's just the simple act of getting a permit for the trail, getting a permit for the sirens, that, that won't be duplicated.
Correct, yeah, that's what I want to try and get across, is it just permitting?
To me, it makes sense to do it, it's a no-brainer, we're trying to be less government, not more. So that's, I, I would think this is a great deal.
And would it save the applicants money too? I mean, you would have to pay less in permits, applications, or...
An applicant, sure, they'd have the one application to go to the, wouldn't pay for our application.
Anything for me, Donna? Okay, thank you. I'm going to open this up for public, for a public hearing. Mr. Roberts?
Kirk Roberts, I live in the city, I'm on the planning commission, and I think this is stupid. The planning commission exists to start the process forward to the council, the council exists to be appealed to by people who feel aggrieved at the planning commission, and the coastal commission exists for people who feel aggrieved at the council process to move it to the coastal commission. I did not go to San Diego, I did not go to Santa Barbara, I did not go to God knows where else they have their meetings. They have one meeting every three years in Eureka, and if there's nothing on the agenda for the North Coast, you don't go. You want to send something to the coastal commission, they want 15 copies. I don't think that's a burden that should be put on somebody in Crescent City from the get-go, because the planning commission hasn't been involved, because the council hasn't been involved as an appeal process. I don't think anything is minor enough to exclude the public. You know, I respect Mr. Butler, and I'm sure he'd make great decisions, but I don't think that's his job to decide what's important and what's not important. I have questions about the right-of-way on Wendell Street, I haven't heard anything about it. I have questions about the bike lane that goes down a street which may or may not be replaced by the path that goes across the water, in front of the water behind the condo site. I have questions about where the sirens are going to be placed. I think that, those are all issues that the citizens deserve to have the right to be involved in from the beginning, and if it takes more time, and it takes money, and it takes paper, and it takes meetings, so be it, that's what we're here for. You're here for it, the planning commission is here for it. Thank you.
Real quick, I'm going to take a minute of my time and ask you a question. I was feeling the same way, but I'm hearing from other people that this is just the permit process, so tell me what your involvement as a planning commissioner is in the permit process?
No permits are issued until the process has been followed.
So you have to go through the application, the review, design?
Determination by Michelle, determination by whoever else, Jim Barnes or anybody else. The planning commission's involved, the council's involved. I would think that your vote last year about... year about acceding to the request to the Coastal Commission, and I think you were the only one to vote against it, was point and purpose as to, they don't run Crescent City, they may have an overview, but we have the right to make our statements before it ever gets to them.
And these, these permits, when they're within the coastal zone, still go through the complete process before it actually goes to the Coastal Commission?
Yeah, that's what we spent the last two and a half years on.
Okay, thank you.
Not just the specific project, but the amendments that were proposed, and then their all-encompassing nature. I think it's, what starts in the city ought to stay in the city until it ends up going to where it ends up going.
Thank you. So Eric, am I, I'm going to continue public comment, but am I correct now in understanding that once we make the application, or someone makes an application for a project, whether it's the public or the city, it goes through the entire process and then gets submitted to the Coastal?
Yeah, the permit, the last portion, we build the architectural review, the plans would be approved, the project would be approved, and then we go to the permitting process.
Nothing changes-
So basically, yeah, the argument that I want to have, he asks questions about the right-of-way, he asks questions about where to place the sirens, it goes, that comes with the architectural review.
It still comes before the planning, it still comes there, just the permitting is one permit. So it doesn't not go before planning commission.
So, we make out, we, we fill out the permit, and then we just send it directly to Coastal?
Correct, we just go to them for the development, whoa, if it was a consolidated permit, yeah, we have an application, early application, and then we go to them, approve project plans, everything, we're going to them, it's going to them anyways. I mean, we can, you know, through Eric here, we still, this is where they're joint jurisdictions, we still have to get their approval.
So, how is it double work?
Eric? Can you come up to the, so we capture it for the broadcast and-
Sorry. How is it two times the work if it's going to go there anyway?
We're just not, we're just eliminating the process for getting the other coastal development permit. It's a little less cost, it's a little speedier for the applicants to go through these projects. And another example, even public work projects that fall in double jurisdiction, take just a road overlay we have, those we're doing work on Howl Drive, I mean, that's somewhere where we could just, you know, send the application down, if we're maintenance work, that type of project.
So it bypasses, I guess I'm not getting it.
I'm sorry, what can I, how can I do to make it clear, I mean?
I don't understand, if we're going to fill out the, the application, it's going to go to the planning commission, it's going to go through the public process for input, then, then it goes to the Coastal Commission?
Right, or we, yeah, exactly. I mean, we, because we have to have approved set of plans-
So you want to send it to the Coastal Commission before it goes through that process?
No, we have to have approved set of plans to take to the Coastal Commission, we can't just send them an idea.
It sounds to me like it's the front end of the permit portion of the process that you're looking to streamline, only.
Correct, we're looking at the permitting, is what we're talking about. We're not trying to take public input out, we're not trying to eliminate, you know, going through the process or public notification process.
But I thought you said if anybody wanted to comment, they'd have to send it to the Coastal Commission?
They still do.
They still do, yeah.
Or go to a commission meeting. If I, if I have a, if I owned at the end of Howl Street down there, 100 square feet, and I wanted to put a gazebo down there on the waterfront, I'm going to go before planning, and I'm going to give them my plans, and they're going to see if it fits. If it does, if it fits all that stuff, they can permit it. Then it'd have to go before the Coastal Commission. It would go with my plans and the Crescent City permit, to have Coastal approve it and permit it.
Right.
What they're saying is, I still go before planning, I still go there and present my plans, public input is still there, they just send it as one, as one permit to Coastal. So the Coastal permit is actually both permits, is that right?
Correct, yeah, so they're just, it would basically be the city and the Coastal permit, for the coastal development portion of it, for the permit.
Mayor, can I ask you a question? Eric, are we talking about, you're talking about permits that automatically have to be issued by the Coastal Commission, or?
Yeah, it's shared jurisdiction, it's go, has to go to them.
So these are not, you're not talking about appeal situations?
No.
Because normally, if something's, if the gazebo's approved by the planning commission and there's no appeal, then it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't even come to the city council. But, but you're talking about situations where the Coastal Commission has to issue the permit no matter what, it's not necessarily an appellate situation?
Basically, and a lot of times the prerequisite for applying for that permit is getting all the local permits, this way you're just-
Yeah, so this is something that-
With our approval to-
What you're talking about is something that's going to the Coastal Commission no matter what.
Correct, yes, that's the shared jurisdiction.
And so you're, you're saying, let's focus all the attention on the, the ultimate, or the, what would normally be the last step in the process, just roll up the early steps and bring it straight there?
Correct.
I guess, I understand that scenario, but I don't understand the two, you're saying two different things to me. You're saying, we're still going to go to planning commission, we're still going to have public input-
The architectural review process, yeah, sure, has to.
And then, on the other hand, you're saying, if anybody wants to comment, they have to send their comments or go to a Coastal Commission meeting?
On the, on the development, on the coastal development permit portion, just on the permitting portion.
If anybody wants to talk at the planning commission and support it, or say it's a bad idea, they come and give their public input.
Right.
And the planning commission can say, oh, that's a good idea, or that's a bad idea, or they can say, no comment. They can, right now, they can grant the permit or not. If they grant the permit and somebody still doesn't like it, and it's in the coastal zone, they can still complain about it. So there's, it doesn't, it doesn't change any public input, as far as I can see. It only changes the permitting part.
I don't know how to make it-
What's it streamlining, if it's going to go there anyway?
Pardon?
The permitting process.
Can you be more explicit in terms of time involved, money involved?
Well, yeah, it eliminates the, the cost for the local permit, and it eliminates-
Because it doesn't go through the local permit process?
Right, so, but you can do, for the, for the development permit portion of it, yes. For the Coastal, the local coastal development permit portion.
You don't have to get two permits, you get one.
You're just getting one permit, you're just going to Coastal for the permit.
And that permit is approved by Coastal Commission and not the city of Crescent City?
Well, yeah, basically, we're giving our approval by having them do the joint application.
By the city forwarding it to Coastal, where the city's approving it as a, they're permitting it by their sending it forward. Because you're never going to get something through Coastal that the city's not going to approve, unless they come here to us, and I suppose-
And it's gone through architectural review.
Right.
So it's already been screened by the architectural review.
But if it's already gone through that process and been approved, it's going to go to Coastal Commission anyway?
Yes.
Sure.
If it's not, if it's not screened and approved through architectural review, then it's, I don't see the benefit.
Save a permit. That's all it does, saves a permit.
Okay, thank you.
Questions?
Just one last one. When you talk about saving time and saving fees, and the example of this, let's see, walkway you're talking about, can you give us an idea, a ballpark figure of how much that would save somebody? Who does it save? Does it save-
Saves the applicant.
The applicant, how much money are we talking about?
And it can't speed up the process, we're, if we're, if we're okay, because a lot of times the coastal development portion of it, it's not, that's what to describe this, it's not kind of in the, it's more of the sequel process, and that end of it, the permitting process of everything, and that type of compliance, not so much in the architectural portion of it, of the colors, and the look, and the style, the right-of-ways, and that type of thing. So that's kind of streamlining. So sometime, we can send a permit, just go ahead and apply for the coastal development permit as you're going through the architectural review process. You know, if you have your plans or anything are set out already, but then you can also go, take it to, you know, you can have them go at the same time. So that's kind of speed-
So what if, what if you just go ahead and send this to the Coastal Commission, and yet the architectural review committee deems that this person needs to do, they add conditions to the permit?
They still have to follow those conditions.
Then you have to resubmit the application as-
We never send it until we approve it.
We're, we're the local governing, in, 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 in behalf of the Coastal Commission, we're reviewing it, and we're approving it, and then it will be passed on to the Coastal-
Ms. Rambo, did you have something you'd like to add?
I think the confusion is that Eric's talking about two different processes. There's the architectural review, planning commission process, and once you get through that, then you have to come back and apply for a coastal development permit. So what we're saying is, is after the, instead of going through the coastal development permit process twice, once with the city, and then once with the Coastal Commission, you'd get your architectural approval, or your, and your CUP, or whatever other planning approvals you would require, and then you would only have to go through the Coastal Commission, instead of doing two applications, one with the city and one with the Coastal Commission. So you're not, you're not taking out the public's review of the actual project itself, it's just that one development permit itself.
Okay.
Because it, there's two different, you know, there's two steps, basically, you're to do, you have to do step one, and then step two would be the one that we're streamlining.
Okay, does that clear that up for you, Mr. Roberts?
No.
Okay.
I don't think, I don't think the authority, the city employee, is going to state it in general.
Was this taken to the planning commission first?
No.
Why not?
Um, I'm going to, Eric's been in charge of doing it, so we'll ask him.
Basically, it's going to the Coastal, when I approached them, we asked them about this, they just said, just have the resolution, so that's their standard.
It came up in the context of the BAH trail proposal, and it was actually suggested by the Coastal Commission staff, which is surprising, that they, that this law had been passed and that this was available to us. I don't think this is a die-on-the-hill issue for any of us on the city staff. We just wanted to present it as an option, because there may be projects like this where-
It's just a tool, that's all it is for us, so.
Well, it's probably just me, I, I don't see this-
It's a hard-
I think the mayor has a good idea, though, I think it should go to the planning commission, does that, run it through them and see what their input is.
Well, any, anytime we're going to change the process that the planning commission is involved with, without them having some input on it before it comes to us, seems kind of backwards.
I don't, I don't think it changes that process, though. It still goes to the planning commission. It's still-
Well, we can take it, we can take the planning commission, that's-
The plans go there, the architectural review goes there, they still discuss it on an agenda.
But having been on, served on the planning commission, I, I think that the mayor has a, has a good, a good point, and I think that-
I think that's a good idea, though.
That we should take it through the planning commission and get their input.
I think that's fine.
Well, I think having their buy-in is important, I mean-
That's true, too.
Maybe it's just me, I don't know, but, I don't know.
Okay.
So let's direct staff to take it back and through the planning commission.
And see what they, what their input is.
Okay, before we do that, I'm going to finish, because I interrupted my public comments period, so.
A public hearing, huh?
It is a public hearing, and I, I took up a lot of that public comment. Ms. Cooper?
I'm Ann Cooper, Delmar County. I guess I came here, you know, with confusion also as to exactly how this would affect process. I'd, I'd like more time to look into what this would actually do, and converse with the Coastal Commission. I see in the attachment papers to this, it says, it definitely says, it, it seems like it would short-circuit some public participation, because it says, one application would need to be prepared, I don't know in what cases, but, and one staff report, and the meeting would take place at the next Coastal Commission meeting, you know. I'm going through a major effort to go down to Ventura, and I don't expect to do that with, you know, things that need airing here, and, and should have airing here first. So, it, it seems that it's really not clear, until you actually get people together, where the coastal permit and where other issues are the same or different. There's, it's not a clear-cut, this jurisdiction, that jurisdiction thing, and, and until you get things together, and consider them together, perhaps you're not, you're missing opportunity for public participation to sort that out. Architecture has a lot of coastal implications, and coastal laws affect architectural things. So, it's not clear dividing zones as to what parts of this permit, or, you know, should be chopped out or not. I don't, I don't quite understand it either. Thank you.
Mr. Miles?
I'd like to make a comment. I agree with the gentleman that sits on the planning commission, that these type of permits, or whatever, should start on the local level first, then, once they go through the process, and public has the right to make a comment about it. Because, I want to tell you of my fear. I've been here since 1997, and I've seen this repeatedly happen. There are a number of groups in this community, I'm not going to name them, because I don't want to embarrass people, but they stack the deck sometimes at the Coastal Commission level, by the way they make comments to the Coastal Commission. A good example, Kelly, is the expansion of our airport. I'm wary of any state agency that has as much power as the Coastal Commission. Yes, we do need a state agency overseeing what communities do. But over the years, our Coastal Commission has become, is it word, nimponous, all-powerful, and that takes the rights away from the local communities. I would hope that, on projects, that you people would have confidence on the people that you appoint to the planning commission, let them work through the projects first. I hope my community and my planning commissioners, every five years, they could do a coastal plan for the city, and they can submit it to the Coastal Commission. I hope they're working on that. But, when you give one agency all-powerful, sometimes communities, and I've seen it repeatedly around here, take it in the shorts.
Did you have a comment, ma'am? If you'll give your name, and if you, state if you live in the city or the county.
I'm Jill Halls, and I live in Delmar County. I didn't come here for this issue, actually, tonight, but just listening to it, it seems totally simple to me. My, my brother's in construction here in Crescent City. Anything you do within that Coastal Commission has to be permitted by the Coastal Commission, anyway. They're basically saying, you're going to get all the approval you had before for what your design is, what your colors are, what you're going to do, before this application gets made, it's just taking the redundancy of having two permits. It would be like if, for example, you were going to the DMV to get your car registered for the state of California, and yet we were required one for the county of Delmar also. That would be redundant. That's all they're saying, eliminate a step that's wasted, get rid of it. It takes time for people to get approval from the- It takes time for people to get approval from the city planning board, and even if they get approved, they may not get approved from the Coastal, even though their plans have been approved and the whole project has been approved. It's really simple. It's, I understand it completely.
I'm glad that you do. You're smarter than I am. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll close public comment. Um, Eric, thank you. I'm always for streamlining services. I just can't seem to wrap myself around this, but I, I think I'm understanding it more as we've, went through the process of discussing it, and I'll definitely do a little more homework. But I, I, I would appreciate having the, the option, the opportunity for the Planning Commission to kind of vet it out. Uh, Mr. Ania, were you, I saw you stand up. Did you have a comment? Okay, all right.
Madam Mayor, also, I think it might be beneficial if the staff prepared a flowchart for the permitting process that shows the sequence of events and who the players are. I think it'll make it crystal clear in everybody's mind.
I think after Michelle kind of walked me through the, it's kind of two different processes, it kind of helped me understand it, so...
Madam Mayor, could I ask Eric a quick question about the cost on the permit?
Sure.
On this three-hundred-foot section of trail that you used as an example, what would the cost of the permitting process run?
Through the city or through Coastal?
Both.
Uh, Coastal's dependent on the amount of the cost of the project, so it can get quite expensive.
Well, I'm particularly concerned with what would be eliminated. So we're talking about the one step here in the city, that permit, what...
Local permit's about a hundred bucks.
A hundred bucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Eric. Okay, we're gonna move on to reports. Do we have any outside reports tonight, Rod?
None in the city anymore.
Okay. I'm actually gonna open it up to general public comment now, which is, any member of the audience is invited to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the city. Comments of public interest or on matters or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Uh, we can refer those to staff for future action. After receiving recognition from myself, please state your name, whether you live in the city or the county for the record, and limit your comment to three minutes. Is there any public, general public comment? Mr. Miles?
Kelly, I would appreciate if you would do something. Then also, I have something I'd like to address to Ms. Westfall, too. Is there any way tomorrow you could pick up the phone, call the manager of Solid Waste, and ask him why something that has ta, that was asked a year ago hasn't been done? A year ago, the chair of your planning department came here, Sylvia Boss, I think her name was, I might mispronounce it. She asked if the recycling center on Front Street could be moved. Well, to date, it's still sitting there. My parks people still have to pick up the trash that blows out of it. It's my understanding, after I made two calls, that our contractor for our waste, Mr. Sparrow, was more than willing to move those things because it's his contract, and I've been told by Randy Hatfield, he is more than willing to accept them and start a recycling center at the fairgrounds. I think in our park, it's a blight, and it needs to be moved. Also, I have a question for Ms. Westfall. I heard through the grapevine that she was gonna pull some weeds on an island because she has a permit from Caltrans to take care of that island. I went by there today, and the weeds are there. I heard she asked the city to do it. It is the city's responsibility. Unfortunately, I went to a meeting and I really enjoyed something. Tamron Buchanan of the Transportation, whatever it's called, did a presentation with consultants out of Lake Tahoe. I would hope that someday the plans that they have could be implemented in this city. It would do so much to draw businesses into our downtown area and our community from our tourists. Thank you.
Is there any other public comment? Sir?
My name is John, J-O-H-N, Stetson, S-T-E-T-S-O-N. I am a resident of the county of Del Norte. I've attempted during the past week or so to get a business license, but there doesn't seem to be ordinances or permits or process to accomplish that for the type of business I want to run. I want to run a health and wellness center. It's especially to provide medical patients, seriously ill patients, services that they couldn't perhaps not afford themselves at this point in time, or perhaps they can't get to. We'd be co-opting with other medical service providers in Crescent City to provide services such as acupuncture, acupressure, massage therapy, reflexology, and one of the kickers that makes it controversial is one function of the center will be to function as a collective under Proposition 215 and Senate Bill 420, as well as relevant court decisions since those. Hopefully, we could arrange some accommodative ordinances by the city. At the moment, I've been told that the city works under federal law, even though I believe that particular point relative to the California Medical Law, 215, was overturned, and the city's, in fact, are supposed to respond to the state California Medical Law, not to federal law, even if it conflicts. So says the Amendment 10, I believe, of the U.S. Constitution. I'm here to co-op, to cooperate. That's one of the definitions that I have, cooperate. I'd like to meet with the city attorney. I've attempted to reach him, left a message with his secretary today. He was already on his way here, no problem. I've been bounced around between a couple cities, excuse me, a couple city agencies and the sheriff. Oh, well, that's the way that goes. We want to cooperate with the city, sheriff, the CHP, to meet their needs, to resolve their issues. I'm not interested in getting busted. I'm not interested in opening a business, thinking I'm legal, having law behind me, and get busted because somebody else wants a different interpretation. I'd like to work and develop a valid co-op here. Why me? Because I try to find problems and see if they can be solved with a team solution. Why here? I live in the county now and wish to contribute to the county, in particular regarding the city growth. There's significant retail, commercial, industrial space, and considerable unemployment here.
Sir, if you could wrap up in just a few seconds? Thank you.
While I initially would only employ two to four people, it would expand depending upon what the city's position becomes. With the positions as they exist, I believe the city could eliminate almost all its unemployment if it really wanted to by adopting President Obama's green philosophy and complying with those laws. In the past, it's been prohibition, and I would just like to make one last quote. Prohibition goes beyond the bounds of reason in that it attempts to control a man's appetite by legislation and makes a crime out of things that are not crimes. A prohibition law strikes a blow at the very principles...
Sir?
...upon which our government was founded. That was the last word.
Thank you.
That was in December eighteen forty by Abraham Lincoln.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
I just, did you try to get a business permit within the city limits?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment, ma'am?
Jill Halls again, from Del Norte County. I'm not sure if you guys addressed this. We came in a little bit late. I had a doctor's appointment, but I saw in the paper that you were considering a pay bonus to some of the members of the city for doing their job. And basically, with a shortfall this year with the budgets and the things that have gone on, I find it appalling that you guys are even...
Just so you know, that's item number eighteen on our agenda.
Okay, I can find it as I go. Yeah, but I, I really find it appalling because we are at a situation where we're on a shortfall. And I was in the public sector for many years, and I had, I had goals that I was supposed to meet each one of those years, and never did someone come up to me and say, here's the bonus for doing your job. I mean, there are a hundred people or more probably in this county that would go out and do that job for you for that money. You do not need to reward someone for good work. What you need to do is tell them, good job. You've done well. We appreciate it. We're, that's, that's your service. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Is there any other public comment?
Is this the Black we're talking about?
No. No. Okay, thank you. Any other general public comment?
Yes. Donna Westfall, I live in the city. I'd like to submit this agenda request form to be on the next, um, agenda. The request is to discuss and possibly act upon a request for a forensic audit of the city water sewer rate collection system, and the reason for requesting this discussion action to be taken is that the public concerns are shared by this city council member surrounding the city's water sewer rate collection system. And a second agenda request item, I'd like to be on the next city council agenda, discuss and possibly act upon a request for an investigation into whether the city's acceptance of the one and only bid for the wastewater treatment project violated any state and/or federal laws, and the reason for requesting this discussion action item to be taken is the public's concern shared by this city council member that the city's acceptance of the one and only bid for the wastewater treatment project violated any state and/or federal laws. Thank you.
I'll address her concerns in just a moment. Is there any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Um, first of all, our entire city was just audited, and you, as a councilwoman, have a copy of that audit, and/or if you don't, you have absolute authority to get a copy of that, which includes an audit of all pieces of the city. Um, and then number two, investigate the Walland, whether or not the Wall, us accepting the Walland bid was a violation of laws. I'm not sure if that's something we should do while we are in litigation with Ms. Westfall and, uh, Mr. Walland. Mr. Black, could you comment on that?
I don't think, I think if you wanted to seek a legal opinion of whether or not it was legal to accept the Walland bid, um, I don't think that that is, I don't think that that's barred by the lawsuit. If you're gonna do that, I would recommend probably that you do so through an outside counsel. I was not the attorney for the city when that happened, um, but I suspect that because of, you know, many, many things that have occurred in the last two and a half years that perhaps my legal opinion would not be, uh, not be accepted by all parties. So if that's gonna happen, I would recommend that we seek an outside attorney. And I think it, you know, I think your council is in a position to do that if you like. I think there are pros and cons to doing that.
Would the council like to hear the pros and cons?
Not at this time.
Nope. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move on to item number thirteen. New business, review and approve changes to the fee schedule for the rental of the cultural center. Mr. Butler?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You'll recall that, starting back really last fall and then continuing with the budget workshop held in February of this year, February eighth, the council has directed us to take a hard look at all of the fees that are charged throughout the city, especially those that impact the general fund. Uh, user fees for planning and police services and public works, engineering. One area of general fund fees that we also benefit from each year is the rental of our facilities, and it's basically, in our case, just the cultural center. There is redevelopment agency property that is rented by an attorney in the Housing Authority Office, but that flows into the RDA fund. As far as the general fund goes, it's really one hundred percent generated by the cultural center. As you know, the cultural center is, uh, it's a very valued resource in our community. It has served the community for, for decades now, hosts a lot of both public and private events, so we like to continue to make that available. I think the council's desire is to make the building as available and accessible as possible, but we also would like to make sure that we're recovering at least some basic costs of maintenance and upkeep of the building, and especially now that we have contracted, as part of the general fund budget balancing strategy, we've contracted our general, our janitorial and custodial services to a private sector firm. We are now paying a hundred and eighty dollars for each special cleanup of the cultural center after each time that it is rented. So we would like to have the council begin to discuss and provide some direction for us on what kind, what level of cost recovery you want for the use of that building. Uh, Mr. Ken McDonald, the finance director, and John Cochrane, our central services director, have done an analysis. That's part of your package that's attached, kind of a fee schedule analysis on the cultural center, the costs of what a typical rental costs. And then they have proposed a cultural center fee schedule that's, should be your last, the backside of your last attachment there. We have the current building rental fees, and then we have the proposed fees under the proposal that staff has put together. We don't know exactly what those new fees would generate. Last year, for example, total rentals, total revenue for rentals was about twenty-three thousand dollars. We think that the implementation of these fees might increase that five to ten thousand dollars a year, so it's not a huge amount of money that's gonna balance the general fund, but it does, uh, generate some additional revenue that could be used to help offset some of the costs of running and maintaining that facility, and again, particularly zeroing in on that cleaning fee that we're now paying to the private sector firm. We would like the council to provide us some direction on the overall level of fees and to give us some reaction to this proposal that we've made. Like most of my good ideas, I steal my material from Bob Black, and Bob has suggested in a recent staff meeting that although this is not a huge amount of money that we're talking about, it is a significant issue to the community because the cultural center is such an important building to us and is used for so many different events. If you would prefer to mull this over a little bit, form an ad hoc committee to meet with staff, take a look at the costs that are involved and, you know, the pros and cons of different kind of fee scenarios, we're open to that. There's nothing that requires you to act tonight, although we do have two requests later in the agenda to, from organizations for free use of the facility, so you will have to give us some direction on those specific events tonight. But, uh, you know, we're, if the council does addition, does require or request some additional study on this and wants us to, uh, put together an ad hoc committee of maybe two members, we can certainly, uh, take care of that without any major problems or any, any timeline concerns. But we would like to, some general direction tonight on, on this proposal. Mr. Cochrane and Mr. McDonald are both here tonight to answer questions about either the financial side or the operations side, and with that, I will conclude my report.
Thank you. Thank you. Just a couple of quick observations before we move into discussion. In Mr. McDonald's summary on background, he said that currently we grant a discount, discount to all nonprofits or governmental agencies of fifty percent off the additional hourly charges. And in the current fee schedule, it says we charge, we give a fifty percent discount on base rental fee. So is it, which is it?
First hour's a hundred and twenty, can't go below that. And the discount's fifty percent.
Of the additional hours? Okay, so on the current fee schedule, it's incorrect?
Well, the first hour of, is the minimum everybody pays. They allow a fifty percent discount above that, but it can't go below a hundred and twenty. So by mathematical default, you're paying the hundred and twenty, it's fifty percent discount on everything after that.
So it's a fifty percent discount, not on the base rental, but on additional hours after one twenty?
Yeah. What you said first was right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that's why I put additional hourly charges, 'cause the, the base rental is the first hour.
Right. Okay. So just note on your current fee structure...
That was kind of set up as our minimum of one...
That the discount, the fifty percent discount is actually on the additional hours that they rent it. Okay. And the three hundred, the three hundred and twenty-five dollars per day, that's kind of what you're suggesting is like whether you have it for an hour or ten hours?
Yeah, because the theory is we can't really rent it several times in a day. So an hourly use of the facility, it's kind of sitting there now. If you had one group that was, say, running a five-hundred-person event for eight hours, there's obviously gonna be a lot more utility usage than, you know, an event that's only one hour with fifty people. So, you know, there are some circumstances where that'll be different. I tried to come up with something that covers our cost and simplifies the process, but, you know, I was trying to really simplify it. You know, like the, the one thing that's the biggest problem area, but it's a minimal item, is the reservation deposit. Right now, you pay a thirty-dollar amount, that holds the fee. If you cancel, I can't remember the timeframe, like within thirty days, you get that fee back to you. If somebody picks a date and then cancels at a last minute, there's usually not enough time for somebody else to pick another date, so that date's pretty much gone. So I propose changing that just to a fee. So if you pick that date, you pay that fee. If you pick a different date and cancel the other one, you pay another fee and the other cancellation is just gone. We did a little quick survey in the last day or two of what some of the other facilities around here charge. So if you guys are interested, we, you know, put that all together.
Glad we helped.
Pass that out to you guys. We only finished today. I didn't wanna put this together to be some kind of competitive thing, but I think we need to look at it from that perspective because if somebody's gonna pick a certain date, they really only have a limited choice of venues that they can use.
Well, the more information we have, the better decision we can make.
That's, yeah, but I didn't wanna make it as something competitive between facilities or anything like that, too.
Sure. Council questions of Mr. McDonald or Mr. Cochrane?
Do we know when the last fees were raised at the cultural center?
It's been several years. We usually do it as part of the budget process, as our, as our master fee resolution. I'm gonna say based on what Laura mentioned to me, at least three years since we've had any kind of a, of a broad scale fee increase.
I don't remember any increase since I've been on the council.
I think there was, they restated this in the fee schedule, but it was real hard to see when they had any changes that were, 'cause I think the fees have been in place for a long time. I mean, I could check with some of my staff that have been, you know, handling this for seven years or more, but...
That's okay.
My guess was that it's been in place for some time.
It's been real minimal increases or changes if we've had any.
No, I, I just have a concern about our kitchen and the refrigeration in particular. I, I attended the Chamber annual dinner and some people who worked for that said that, that they had worked, they helped with the catering and that we really need to upgrade the kitchen. So I have concerns about our kitchen facility at the cultural center and so I, you know, I think we need to upgrade it if we're going to upgrade our rates and we need to upgrade our facility and the kitchen, the refrigeration in particular. I don't believe that any of the caterers actually use the kitchen for cooking or anything. They bring the foods there and they don't use the refrigeration. So we can't expect to be charging people for the kitchen use necessarily if it's not really up to standards.
Yeah, I think right now, our kitchen without any use of the dishes is only twenty dollars additional. I propose to move it up to fifty, but you know, like a commercial refrigerator like that, I'm sure is gonna be three, four, five grand.
I'm sure it's very expensive.
We do need some, you know, there, our, our stuff has not been replaced in a long period of time too, so our dishes, some of the appliances, all those kind of things...
All of that needs to be upgraded. I know, it's very expensive.
We've, yeah, we've, we've talked about...
I know.
...that, we just haven't made it a priority.
Yeah.
And I think if we went to dealing with all those, we definitely have to probably have higher rates to recover some of that cost, too.
Well, the entire heating system needs to be replaced as well.
And I think that the utilities go way up when somebody uses the facility too, because it takes a while to heat or cool.
Yeah, it needs a whole new system.
Our Port Cultural Center, it does get a lot of use, so...
Can we, can we consider that as an RDA project?
Yeah, I was just gonna mention, just so this item isn't a total downer, we actually have been taking seriously the council's comments over the last year about trying to do something with that building. We have moved forward with, Gina and the Chamber folks will be happy to be witnesses for this. We've moved forward with repairing that leak on the...
Yeah.
Could that be the eastern, western side of the building? That's been a problem off and on for years. John and his crews went in there and really tore things apart, analyzed it. We believe that we've got it resolved now. And that was just kind of handled through our regular operating funds and staff. John also, through just being frugal on his end with his building services budget, his central services budget, has identified money that he can use for, it's like a power washing of the entire building, exterior, the entire building. And are we staining it, John? Is that the right term to use? Or protecting it?
You're gonna stain it, no, you're gonna clean all the fungus off.
Power wash?
Power wash.
Yeah. And isn't there something that we're doing, some kind of a protector?
We're staining it.
Staining it, after that's done.
It's, it shouldn't change the color of it, it should seal it.
Good.
Yeah, so that'll be going forward. And then, as I've thought through, I've been working a lot on all these redevelopment issues, I think there's a very good chance that we can use redevelopment funds on that building. It's definitely in project area two, it's a public facility, publicly owned. And I think we can tackle the roof, which is the other big one. In fact, John was telling me just last week, there's been another leak sprung in the area of the roof that has not been done yet. That is probably gonna be a thirty-five thousand dollar number to, to do the roof the way we wanna do it and to complete the whole thing. And then also the heating, venting, heating, ventilation and air conditioning system, which is about a fifteen thousand dollar figure. We believe that those can move forward. If not during this current budget year, then the very beginning of next budget year. And I don't see any reason why we can't begin to look at the kitchen issues and at least begin to define what the, what we're looking at in terms of costs there, because there's no question, that's a big, big need.
How about retrofitting for the acoustics? Excuse me, a little congested. Can we look at something there? 'Cause it'd be nice to have our council meetings back there, if we have better acoustics.
Sure, I don't see any reason why we can't begin to look into that as well, when we do the, the kitchen pricing.
Any other questions, council? No? Thank you. I'm gonna take public comment on this issue. Mr. Miles?
I would hope tonight that you would take the recommendations of your staff on the fee increases for our cultural center. The cultural center, for years, is a gym. It's a nice meeting area. There's some problems with it, and I think these problems need to be addressed. If a party wants to go in there in the daytime, let's say they're tourists, and they wanna sit down and look at maps after the, visit the Chamber of Commerce, we don't have a handicap door like this building does or the vets hall, where you just hit it and it opens up. We have an art gallery in there that shamefully is not being used by our art community. Then I have mixed feelings tonight, too. And I'm gonna talk to them now, I'm gonna address them again when the two requests are made. We have a number of organizations from the Chamber of Commerce for their annual dinner, the Earth Day People, the Lucian Goose Festival, or the Birding Festival now. And then there's a number of nonprofits that don't come here and ask for a fee waiver. My concern, and I don't know how this could be addressed in your fees, is that when a group has vendors and those vendors are selling items as part of their event, that those vendors themselves should have to pay the city for the use of the space they're using besides getting a business license. I remember when we used to have an art festival in there as part of our day. A lot of people were making a lot of money. And nothing was coming back to the city on that. I'm aware, and I look at what the county did a few years ago, and I think Bob was their attorney at the, that died, they looked at their fees for their parks and the vets hall. They made changes. Well, our cultural center...
Could you please wrap?
I'm finishing it up. Our cultural center surpasses the vets hall by a hundred percent. But we can't even do anything about the per-k floor that needs something done.
Thank you, Richard. Is there any other public comment?
I'm Pete Halls. I, I cook for a living. I, I worked to prison and, as Chef Ramsey said, would say, that is a kitchen nightmare. When I, when I had an event there for a wedding, I complained the dishwasher wouldn't go above a hundred degrees, which is, is not right. There's a microwave there that's probably from the seventies. The refrigeration unit is, is appalling and half the burners don't work. If you're gonna start charging people extra money, you should fix the place up.
Good to see you, Pete. Any other public comment? Mr. Anya?
Richard Anya, I live in Creston City. I know for the last five years, we haven't looked at fees. It always, we always seem to push it away, we have other things going on. But a couple of comments I wanted to make. I think we're, now that we're in deficit spending for the city, as far as groups go, nonprofits, they should at least pay for the function of the building that night, for the electricity and for the certain fees, so the city doesn't lose any money. Now, you can start that a few months from now, you can start at July first. So nonprofits, when they plan their events, they'll build that in to their budgets, if they're gonna get it, because they'll still get a deal. One thing I'd like to suggest, and the other towns that I've worked for, we've had it, we don't have it here at the cultural center, is we don't have an attendant on duty to watch over our city building. Usually that's built into the cost, usually it's a college student, because if there's an emergency there, the person has the key and that's it. If there's problems with the restrooms, if there's problems, they're gonna have to dial nine-one-one. An attendant there knows what to do. And I think we need to watch over our city assets, especially if we're gonna fix it up. It goes with part of the cost. That way you don't have to charge a seventy-five dollar fee for the key, and they get that back, I guess, when they, when they bring the key back. But you need us, you need somebody there representing the city when they're hosting that event, especially if they're paying that much money for things. Something may happen. A table may break or they can't lock a door. We assume that they're gonna lock all those doors. There's art up there. If they don't lock all those doors, we won't find out until after its verdict arrives. So I think it's, it's a good idea to have an attendant there. And I also think for nonprofits, that they can build it into their budgets and we, we should give them a break in their rates. But I, I don't think the ci, the city should go in debt to doing that. I think that we should at least break even for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim? How are you, Mr. Hoon?
Oh, good. Tim Hoon, I'm a city resident and I, I'm just thrilled that I live close enough that I could be watching on, you know, the internet and say, oh, I wanna give public comment. And Richard, you started giving public comment on this issue and thanks for taking your whole three minutes, 'cause otherwise I might not have made it here, you know, so it...
You must've ran.
I can't, I know, I, but I, I only ran from the car to the, you know, the building. I'm still breathing heavy, I gotta get in shape. But I, but the reason I, I saw this on the gen, I thought, I'm really glad you're talking about this. And then the, the very first few comments made me think, I am so happy that Rod Butler is our city manager. 'Cause Rod, you said the first thing, well, if you'd like to, you know, have an ad hoc committee and it's kind of a, you know, the community has strong feelings about the cultural center and we might have to nuance the, the fee structure that's exactly what's needed. So, so thanks for mentioning that. You know, the great idea to increase the fee structure, but it's, it's imperfect as proposed, just not, needs a little, there's an eight-hour limit and I'm not kidding about, I'd be not ashamed. There's, there's an eight-hour limit and, you know, for instance, why is that, you know, and maybe there's a good reason, but that would come out in the little ad hoc committee. But, and Rich Anya, like, Rich, I'm sorry you're not on the city council. Yeah, that was a good idea, that have an attendant there, someone to, you know, help out, where's an extra table, how do you get extra? I think we ran out of paper towels at the crab festivals, where do you get more paper towels, all those things. So having an, an attendant is a great idea. And July first, perfect time to raise fees. Rich is right, nonprofits can put it in their budget, so no one's surprised right now. Is the wastewater authority people here?
Wastewater?
Yeah. Oh, they're, they're, they're gonna ask for a fee reduction.
Solid waste?
Solid waste management authority. How much money do they collect here? Oh, they, I'll get other, it's like, you guys need a break on the fees? Yeah, like five million dollars in the bank, you know? But anyway, you know?
Five million, wow.
Anyway, they have a lot of money.
Have you actually seen the budget?
But anyway, no. But, anyway, good, good thoughts, raise, raise the fees and protect our assets and, and just figure out exactly how to do that, you know, soon. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks for racing down here.
Yeah, it's never too late to start your new, new year's resolution to get in shape.
He had that in his will for all, at the beginning of the year.
All right. Is there any other public comment? Ma'am?
I think the non-refundable deposit idea is great. I think it actually should be more than that because I think that they shouldn't do it non-refundable just completely, but they should do the hour, first hour rental as the deposit and then give a thirty-day limit to where you have to have decided within that thirty days, otherwise the whole thing's non-refundable. Because thirty dollars, if they cancel the week before, that's still not gonna get your hall rented. And there are other people that will rent it. I mean, it's the nicest building in town. And, and to limit it to that small amount and then make everybody pay it, whether they're counseling it three months ahead of time or just right before is, is different. It should be within a certain period of time and a, and a larger amount, 'cause that would really help cover your costs.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we're gonna close public comment, bring it back to the council. I just have a few comments. I don't think we're ready to...
I don't think we're ready to adopt this tonight, in my personal opinion. The city's not in the business of making a lot of money on our facility. We just, you know, we need to, but we do need to break even. And when we have artists in there making money, I think that's a great thing. So, I mean, that's what it's there for. If we can, if we have a facility where people in our community can make, help, you know, make a living, I'm all for that. I, I'm thinking about the nonprofit issue. I think that there, one recommendation I have is, and I think I mentioned this to Rod, but a fee for a nonprofit that's having an event that's not making any money versus a nonprofit event that's a fundraising event. I think that maybe there might be two different fees for that. And then also, if, for instance, it's a fundraiser where the public benefit far outweighs, you know, the, I'm not sure what I'm trying to say, but, for instance, Habitat for Humanity, you know, that may, the council that's sitting here may feel like that benefit far outweighs the, the re, the ability to recover the fee in its entirety. So I would, you know, give the council the option to have an exemption, should that nonprofit choose to present something to us that shows that they really don't have a big budget for a large expense.
What the profit would be going towards?
Right. Yeah.
I think that your comment is that a nonprofit would be profiting because of the event. And the other scenario, a nonprofit sponsoring something where maybe several individuals would profit from the event.
Right. Yeah. Yeah, well, like if, I'm just making this up, but let's say, you know, cost has got a tough year, you know, and their finances are low, and, and their, you know, board of directors goes out and says, let's do some fundraisers to try to, you know, keep our organization going. You know, that's different than, you know, a nonprofit that's trying to raise money to build house, houses for the needy. I mean, there's, there's got to be some kind of distinction there, I think. So I would just like to see that. And then I, you know, I think that there's some movement here in these proposed fees. And then I think definitely the upgrade on the kitchen is something that needs to be in the plan for the new budget year. I think we've been talking about that for about a year, year and a half now, so we've had lots of stuff going on there. So, any other input?
The only thing I'd like is the fact that if we are going to ask more, I think Pete had to hit it on the nail, if we're going to ask more, especially for kitchen, we ought to have a kitchen that works. And so I would like, as mentioned, is this, is to come back. And I would like to see if we can spend RDA money, since we have some RDA funds, you know, we have a general fund money, to go ahead and see what it would take to get the kitchen going.
And I don't think the city staff should figure out what that kitchen should look like. I think maybe getting some input from caterers would be a good.
Okay, you guys, we can't have comments, just a free-for-all, but-
I was just going to say, Mr. Wakefield uses that often in his catering, when he's wearing his catering business hat, and has shared a lot of suggestions and ideas, so at least one resource we can use.
Yeah, because from what I've heard, it's just very, even if things are working, it's very un-user friendly. So, just take, take some-
Yes. If there is enough interest with people from the community to give their input, they could not just, maybe not formally have an ad hoc committee, but if, if they wanted to have a, a meeting with city staff, perhaps we could do that, if there was enough interest generated. I don't know if we have to have a formal ad hoc-
Well, now, I think first we need to find out if we can move forward with the project, before we need to get a committee together to see what it would look like.
But if people are interested, they could let our city manager-
Sure. We're having a town hall meeting on April 10th.
That's right.
Yeah.
It's part of Beachfront Parks.
That's right.
Charles, have anything?
Yeah. I've got several things. I appreciate the staff's report. It's time to do something. We've identified some problems, and based on this chart that Mr. McDonald's afforded us, we've got the best deal in town. And, and I think the city has done a, a good part in creating goodwill in the community, but things have changed economically. It's a very different time. The city, it's, they're, you're conducting a business, and this is a piece of that business. And when, when you think about all the things that are involved in renting the space, there's the time to, to set up the, the reservations, the resources, the utilities, the liability insurance. And then, you know, I think what's happened over time is the funds that have been charged don't cover basic things like operation and maintenance, like happened with the old wastewater treatment facility. So now we've got behind the, the ball, if you will, and so we're going to have to try to play catch-up. And so it's about trying to cover those costs, stop the bleeding, and stop subsidizing multiple events because of the times that we're in. And clearly, it's been a long time since the fees were raised.
I think the council should take some time to look at this spreadsheet that we were given, and provide some input to the, to the staff with your thoughts. And, I don't know, is it, is it council's wish to bring this back, or to have one or two of us work with Ken and John on putting some different ideas together?
I think it's a big enough deal to have a couple council members work with the senior staff on it.
Okay. And bring it back later. Are you volunteering?
I'd be happy to.
How's your welcome sign area ad hoc committee coming?
That's great.
Do you have time?
We'll make time.
All right. I'll do it with you. All right. Thank you.
How are you cooking?
We're cooking. Consider request from Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority that does not have a $5 million budget to waive the fees for the use of the cultural center for the Earth Arts Festival. Mr. Butler?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, speaking of the cultural center, we have two requests tonight for free rental of, or free use of that facility. The first one is for an event that has happened for a number of years now, and that is the Solid Waste Authority's Earth Arts Festival. This year it will be on Sunday, April 18th. And we do have a representative there, Patricia Abbey, to, let me tell us a little bit about that event. I don't think there are any major plans for major differences in the event over previous years. So it's a Sunday afternoon. But they have requested the traditional fee waiver, which they have received in the past. And the staff's recommendation is that this year, the authority be asked to pay at least that minimum cleanup fee of $180, which covers our costs now that we're using the private contractor for janitorial services. So we would have, well, we're looking for the council's direction in general on the fees, but the staff recommendation would be that at least that minimum cleanup fee be charged this year in light of the changes that have taken place since last year's event. That's the end of my report, and I think Patricia's here to add anything that she wants.
With all respect, Mr. Butler-
Could you come up to the microphone?
With all respect, I have a crew that I personally clean with myself after the Earth Day. I do not leave and lock up the cultural center until it is absolutely clean. I do understand where you're coming from. This year, we're having an Earth Day art contest. This is our third year with the Delmar County School District. We'll have a lot of the students from the schools, they're involved. We're having the Delmar High School band, the steel band, the stage band. We do have vendors, and they are responsible for their, their sales tax and their business license, as one person mentioned earlier. We do have an insurance policy, and I'm not sure if you have a copy of that, but I sent it with the rental application.
Yeah, we did include that in the, so the council members have it.
Any questions for the council, or for Patty from the council?
Is the group a nonprofit?
We're a joint powers authority, ma'am, between the City of Crescent City and the County of Delmar.
Does that make it a nonprofit?
We're a government agency, ma'am.
Okay. Any other questions?
I, I assume that the Solid Waste Authority has a reserve funding mechanisms?
Reserve funding?
Well, I mean, Mr. Hune was here earlier, and he said the $5 million. And I, I'm not certain that's the case, but-
I don't handle the financial aspects of anything in solid waste. I do the recycling part.
But for me, the, this is an example, this is a government agency, a JPA, and the, the city has created goodwill in the past, and I think that's admirable. But I also think times have changed, and it requires revisiting it, which we're doing right now.
Well, we all have reserve funds. City does, so does the JPA. And Dennis and I both sit on that board, and Dennis is probably more familiar with our budget.
I would assume that there, there is a reserve account, and I know that in the budget, there's nothing budgeted for Earth Day as far as rental for the cultural center. But again, there's, as any governmental agency has, there's some funds there that can be moved from one budget to another, depends on the-
Yeah.
The need.
If I remember correctly, it's somewhere around the $400,000 range, not $5 million or less.
Well, Tim got a decimal point.
Yeah. That's okay.
It's just a silly decimal point.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Miles?
I can testify that Patty is-
As you do every year.
Yeah. I can testify. I didn't do it last year because I was out of town. But every year that I've been part of Earth Day, Patty is a taskmaster. I can testify that we left, more than once, we've left the cultural center cleaner than we found it. It embarrassed me one year. The mop was so dirty that we couldn't mop bathrooms with it. But I do have a concern, let me explain this. I do have a concern that I'm aware that Kevin this year did not get the funding from the state Solid Waste Authority to put on Earth Day. He had to, there's a cost. He goes out and gets sponsorships, like the National Park, the tribes. Patty can explain who else is on that. I would hope for Earth Day, the only thing that you would do is this. They are vendors. And it's my understanding, we're going to have a outdoor market as part of Earth Day like we had Saturday, and that's going to be put on by RHS. I would hope that any vendor at any event that's held in the cultural center would go to my city hall and get a business license for a day, and be able to show that business license to the city's rental people before they sell anything, whether it's a painting, jewelry, food, coffee. Because we in the past, and I can testify it, have lost out in that kind of funding.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Tim?
Tim Hune, just wanted to clarify, sorry for misrepresenting and overstating the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority's budget and any possible discretionary funds. I think they collect about $3 million in fees, and they give most of that to their contractor, recology, or, you know, the guys that drive the trash trucks. But anyway, if there was, and I'm sure the Earth, I mean, we're all in support of Earth Day, it's just, it's kind of comical. So if anyone wanted to come by the workforce center and ask for a sponsorship for Earth Day, we'd be happy to hang our banner up there for, you know, say, $180 to help cover costs, so come by the workforce center.
Imagine that. Thanks, Tim. Patty, just a couple of questions, just to clarify. How many vendors at Earth Arts Day, or Earth Festival Day?
This year, we have approximately 20 vendors.
And they pay you a fee?
No, I have a copy of the vendors agreement for-
Oh, that's okay.
There, there's no charge.
No charge?
And they're required to have their own business license and everything intact prior to the event.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a couple of suggestions, Mayor, for the council's discussion. You could look at, for example, charging each vendor $10. $20 times 10 covers that $180 cleaning fee. The other thing that you could look at would be taking a cleaning deposit from the Solid Waste Authority in the amount of $180. If Patricia and her crew clean the building to the satisfaction of John Cochrane, or whoever's doing the, the white glove inspection the next day, that deposit would be returned to no net cost of the organization. Just a couple of ideas you may want to-
Does our private cleaning group, do they just automatically go clean, or are they given direction by city staff?
You know, that's a good question. I probably shouldn't have made that, that option unless I checked that out. I think John took off.
Yeah.
I don't know if they're on, I know for things like the swimming pool and the city buildings, they're on a routine, set schedule, but I don't know if they just go to the-
Because that would work if, if we had the option to say to them, oh, you don't need to clean it this time, it was cleaned too. Well, you can just make that happen, I'm sure. I would assume.
He probably doesn't clean that on a regular basis, Adrian and the gang.
The electricity cost for an average day?
See, I think that was in the Ken McDonald analysis here.
Sixty bucks? Eighty-five?
Okay.
I'm just looking for an average cost of electricity for a day that it's actually used for an event.
To get that information would be so detailed, we would spend more than $85 to get that information. What I'm telling you is, we get a monthly bill. That monthly bill is any events that were there, plus the daily use of the visitor center and the chamber offices. So there's, you can't really separate out the-
Okay, so you're averaging the, the actual cost, the actual cost to the city is 85 bucks?
Divided by 365 days for a one-year period and came up with $85 a year. Divided by 365 days for a one-year period and came up with $85 a year.
A day?
Per day, sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, I'm gonna throw out, until we have our new fee schedule set, I don't think it's probably fair to throw a fee at the vendors at the last minute, but maybe that could be proposed for the future. I'm gonna throw out the $180 refundable cleaning deposit and the $85 fee just to recover our costs. As an option.
Throw out as in?
I'm proposing that to the council. If anybody would like to agree with me, you can do so. Okay, I move that we, uh, charge, uh, the nonprofit event of the Earth Arts Festival, $85 plus $180 refundable cleaning deposit based on satisfaction of city staff.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion or further motions? Okay, uh, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Burns?
Yeah.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalhoub?
Yes, thank you. Thanks Patty.
April 18th. And I think you got a, a donator there to help cover your fee. Okay, stay because there's another one on the agenda, Tim. If you want to cover their costs too. Uh, okay, consider requests from the California Redwoods Bird and Nature Festival to waive the fees for May 7th through the 9th. I think, uh, uh, we heard about the event earlier, so we all know what we're talking about. This is a two-day event, so unless there's ques-, four-day event? Seven, eight, nine, three days? So you're gonna use the cultural center the 6th through the 10th? Which starts on the 7th? I don't have my, oh, yeah, I do. What days do you want to use the cultural center? Six, seven, eight, nine, not the 10th.
We have a 7th.
Six is Thursday. So the event is Friday, Saturday, Sunday? So you're gonna use the cultural center to set up on Thursday? You're gonna use the facility the 7th, 8th, and 9th? And then tear down on the 10th? Okay. So three, three, three days. Okay. I'll take, any questions before I take public comment from the council? Public comment? Mr. Miles?
Well, I think I'm gonna make it into me tonight. There's a difference between this festival and Earth Day. I'd like to explain it. My perspective, not Mr. Hauser. This draws people from all of the United States. Most of these people that come here for this festival are birders. A few townspeople take part of the, of the events. They have vendors too. And these vendors sell things like binoculars, scopes, all kinds of things. Most of them about $1,000 if people are gonna buy them. They have some artwork sometimes. But how this is different is that people pay to go on events. Most of the events are not free. It's been like this for years. The people that lead these events in the past, some of them did it for free and some of them actually made money. If I'm wrong, Rick Hauser can get up here and tell, tell you that I'm wrong. In the past, just like Earth Day, for a couple of years, I took that evening of Sunday and helped them tear down. Quit doing it. The reason is, this is one event that I don't think should get a free pass. Because there is money in this event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Rick, I'll ask you the same thing. Uh, vendors, do you guys just charge a fee for them?
Twenty-two vendors, six are commercial, the rest are nonprofit agencies.
A what?
A minimal fee for them. I believe nonprofits are 25, commercials are 50. And in the past, we've gotten a business license from the city to cover all.
Okay. But, Rick, could you come up here and, I mean...
Thank you.
Could you talk about how much profit that the, um, that the Goose Festival in the past has made?
Profit?
Yeah.
Uh, we hope to end the festival with $4,000, which is the nut to make it to the next year.
So it's not, it's not exactly bringing in a whole bunch of money and there's no guarantee?
Well, it's bringing in, uh, money, but it's bringing into the community, not to the organization itself, yes.
The public benefit is much greater than...
That's what I meant, right.
That's kind of the thought process I was trying to get to earlier.
Exactly.
When you, when you put on an event as a nonprofit and the bene-, the biggest benefit is to the businesses here in town, then that benefit outweighs, I think, the small profit that you make.
And I think the city benefits by the sales tax and the DOT from people coming in and staying in the motels and et cetera.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, do you guys do a major cleanup process or would you want to pay the cleaning fee?
Oh, I think we should be the first organization to offer to pay the cleaning fee since it is an independent contractor, which has changed since the last time we used the facility. But for sure, yes, we would like to do that.
Okay. So I'm gonna recommend that we charge, just like the last one, the $85 a day just to cover our basic electricity, uh, whatever that, that cost is. And then the, the cleaning fee.
Is that a motion?
Move, yes, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay. Did you have any comment on that, Rick?
Yeah, the festival's too busy.
Nice try.
We have it marked down as seven.
We'll charge you for, we'll charge you for the, the three days of use, I think. Three days of use? Okay. Okay, uh, could you please pull the vote?
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalhoub?
Yes. And I know this has kind of been a long process, but it's new, you know? And so it's worth, you know, kind of discussing and, and addressing. So thank you for, for everybody's patience. Okay, moving on to number 16. Consider and approve a partnership between city staff and local artist groups in preparing grant applications for public art projects. Ms. Rembo.
A couple of months ago, I was approached by the representative from the Elk Valley Artisans who brought the whole idea to me about partnering with the city and with the local artist group to kind of enhance the grant money that we can get. There are certain grants that, uh, for public art that can only be applied to, for, by the city. So that would give them an, an extra pool of money to draw from for some of their, their public art projects. And that would include not only the murals and the mosaics that we currently do, but also some, maybe some fountains, sculptures, um, statues, some other kinds of ideas. There's a lot of stuff that can fall into public art. So we as staff, um, it, it'll take a little bit more of my time, but I, you know, public art is a big draw for a city. It brings in people, um, that, look, from the local artist community that want to see what we have. There are sculptures in other cities that draw people from around the world. So, you know, we got to start somewhere. So, um, right now, we're just asking that you, okay, that the proposed partnership and allow staff to work with them on that. And this would be open to not only Elk Valley Artisans, but it would be open to any artist that in this area that would like to participate.
Public art, is that on public property?
Doesn't have to be. It's basically anything that the public can view. Any kind of art that is available for, I mean, it doesn't have to, it can be, um, a lot of, what am I trying to say? A lot of office parks, for instance, have, um, art spread around their office park and then that's private property. A lot of businesses, a lot of malls have things scattered around on their private property.
My concern is using what would be perceived as public funds, although may not technically be public funds, to enhance a pri-, piece of private, private property.
Well, each grant, we can, we can identify, um, each grant as it comes. You know, it would, we wouldn't be giving out the money without your permission. So it would be, you know, kind of on each case, we would evaluate it.
Okay, and then, uh, is, have you done any research to find out if these grants have an admin fee that we could use to recover our staff time?
Some do, some don't. A lot of them require matching, which is, again, we would come to you and ask for whatever form of matching. Sometimes it's just simply they, they want a match of money. Sometimes they want a match of, um, you know, they're, they require that you use children to participate or they require some other thing that, you know, we would be getting from you guys.
Okay, and last question was, would the grant pay for all aspects of the project, including the art, uh, the equipment, the artist's time, the equipment, the...
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions?
I have a couple of comments. I'm, I'm in support of the concept of partnership with the arts and celebrating the arts and promoting and celebrating local artists. In Southern California, it was not uncommon for, uh, I actually think all public works projects had to, uh, in, include, I think it was 1% or 2% of the total project budget to the arts. So that that was a common thread that ran through, uh, various developments. And then, uh, as has been stated, public or private developers also, uh, commonly would do that. So I think it's, it's a, a win-win beneficial thing.
So any developer, you would tell them in their conditions, 1% of the value of your project has to be...
Attributed to the arts. Sometimes they would put it into, into the architecture of the buildings or the project or into freestanding art that was interactive, water features or sculpture or whatever.
And did that piece of art have to be approved as part of the project?
It did.
Okay, I like that idea.
I'm all for it and I see the Mungers are here and there. They're still awake. So thank you for staying a lo-, staying here. So, but you can't apply for this money unless it's a, the city that's...
There are some. There's some money available for public art projects through the state and federal sources that are through community development grants that are specifically applied or meant for cities. There's also the private grants that they would be continuing to apply for as Elk Valley Artisans or whichever other art group. But this would just broaden the pool of money that would be available.
So we would only apply for those that apply to cities, like for community development?
Right.
Well, I'm thrilled about it and thank you very much for all you've already done for our community. I, I love all the murals. It's exciting every time I go by one of them, so thank you.
This would include the mural society then too, to open up a, an avenue of revenue for them?
Right. And once we got your okay to go ahead, that was our next step. We, we were talking about getting, you know, going out and outreach to some of the artist groups and the local artists to get them involved as well.
Then is it a competitive process for the art, art groups to apply to the council? Once a, or how does that work?
Oh, once they have an art project, um, they would basically just come to us and ask, you know, we would have this pool of money, however we work it out. I mean, there's financial, there's finance issues.
I was just curious, do you have to have the project to apply for the money?
Not always. But local art, but artists always seem to have a project that they're ready to do at any time. So if, if they do need a project to go ahead and apply for the grant, I'm sure we can find some project for them, for, for the grant to go with.
This is not necessarily a specific grant because some grants you don't even know about yet. And they'll publish them. Lucern may have a grant for painting cows. Don't laugh because that's the grant Lucern has. And then you can apply for that. And my daughter won that, $25,000 for the school. A student did it, yes. So as they come about, I think this is gonna be in place so that we could help in the planning aspect of getting that grant for whatever. It could be the city, it could be the mural society, it could be a private nonprofit.
Yeah.
So I think it's just like some...
And most grants, and Harley has, his organization has come to me before asking for a letter of support from the city for their grants. So we're already helping each other.
It could be a standing letter that we have a working relationship with whoever.
I would just, I just want you to think about whether you have to have the project or not for a grant.
It, that each grant is different.
Right, well, what I'm trying to get at though is you may have three different groups that want us to fund something. And so if we have to have the project to apply for the grant, then think about that process we'll go through to pick which project is going to be used to apply for the grant.
Well...
Versus if we apply for a grant, we have half a million dollars, they all submit their projects and we say, oh, we can fund this one, this one, and this one.
Well, if we're, if we ever get, are lucky enough to have three at a time, um, you know, we can figure out a way to do it. It's, it's just a matter of, um, working out the specifics.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you. Any public comment on this issue? Mr. Roberts?
Kirk Roberts here is your representative on the mural society. Uh, I'm all for this. Will Kaplinger got me tons of ordinances from around the state of California. And you're on a very slippery slope if you sit up here and try and approve the art as the city council because it becomes a First Amendment issue.
If we what?
If you try to approve a grant because you like it and you don't like some other one, it becomes a First Amendment issue of freedom of speech. I'm just, I read through the ordinances thinking that I could magically pull all the right paragraphs out of all the different ordinances and come through the mural society to you and say, here's a public arts ordinance. Can't do it. And even the ones that I read aren't gonna stand a solid test if somebody wants to take someone to court. So I'm just offering that as, you know, you don't become the art jury. And as far as murals go, the general plan has three specific requirements, which we're all familiar with. As far as the rest of the artwork goes, my understanding from what we talked about last... artwork goes, my understanding from what we talked about last week at the planning commission was that it wouldn't be city funding. There'd be a project and you would kind of be a co-sponsor, offering the city's good name and the city's good offices to find these things. And at most, you would be a conduit for the funds.
Help with grant writing for construction of that.
And I didn't hear that just now. I heard that there might be a request for funds from the city. So I'll go off on part two, which is the city doesn't have the money to do this. So you shouldn't be thinking about that. Thank you.
Well, I think what Michelle said was, there's public.
Matching.
There's public art grants that cities can apply for that are public, community development grants for public art.
I heard her say matching funds, which could be like in the way of perhaps staff time, or things like that, which wouldn't necessarily mean?
Square feet in the park.
Yeah, square feet in the park. But we, it wouldn't be money necessarily. It would be matching in terms of staff time, or something like that. But we wouldn't have, if, if a grant required matching money funds, then we wouldn't be able to do it. But it would depend on the grant, right, Michelle? Yeah, so.
Mr. Miles?
I'd like to tell you a story, Kelly. I think this is an excellent idea. I personally know how this works. My stepmother is a Japanese watercolorist. A few years ago, when the state had all kinds of money. Are you awake? Because if you're not going to listen to me, I'll sit down.
Wow. Mr. Munger?
I'm Harley Munger, live in Delarque County. I'm the director of Elk Valley Artisans. And if there's any question, any questions I can answer, I'll try. This funding is a two-way street. The city has funding or has access to funding that a private nonprofit does not have. And there is funding out there that private nonprofits have that the city is not allowed to go after. Government agencies aren't allowed to go after it. What we're requesting is that we have access to Michelle's skills and talents as a grant writer to go after some of this funding for projects within the city. And this came up from Linda Kaufman, who wanted some murals at the library. We did not have access to a grant writer at the time, so I went in and asked Michelle. She said she'd have to bring it in front of you. So here we are.
Any questions from the council, Mr. Munger?
Yes. I love the idea. I'd like to see it expanded. I miss the art walks in Santa Barbara every Sunday.
If this works out, it will be expanded.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I'd like to try again, Kelly.
Sorry, Richard. Going to close public comments, bring it back to the council.
I like the idea of using city staff to help with planning and grant writing. It's a good use of personnel. I, I would support this.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Is this going to be a specific planning department task?
Could be planning, it could be, you know, we have Charlene Maisy on board as a contract grants writer. She, most of her focus is CDBG, but there's no reason she couldn't branch out into, she has experience in other areas beyond just CDBG. So if there was something special where we thought there was a really solid chance of us getting funding, that would be another option.
I was just curious.
The whole idea is to provide consultation for grants and or planning. That's my motion.
Have a motion by Mr. Burns?
I second it.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes five to zero. Thank you. Thanks for bringing us a new idea. Number 17, approve and authorize the city manager to execute a lease agreement with T-Mobile Corporation for a new tower at the city's corporate yard. Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, members of the council, every once in a while, we get kind of a win-win project just dropped in our lap. And we hope you'll feel this is a win-win project. Last August or September, we were contacted just out of the blue by T-Mobile West, which of course is a part of the larger international T-Mobile company. And they had identified our corporate yard site as an area where they were interested in putting up a new communications tower. They're expanding their cell phone and other communication services in our area, and saw our corporate yard as an attractive site for them. They were willing to take down the old existing tower that we have there and put up a new tower. Has a number of advantages. One is the obvious, you know, from the, the revenue greedy city manager in me likes the $12,000 general fund revenue that we will get immediately. We also will have, it'll be a large enough tower that we'll be able to rent additional space to other carriers down the road. Private companies could be other public sector agencies that are looking for communications tower space. So there's even more revenue opportunity down the road beyond that 12,000 initial money that we'll be getting as a result of this lease. Almost as important, maybe more important, are the opportunities that will give us as a city to move forward on a couple of our technology projects. Fritz has been working on the wireless network, and this tower will help make that possible. We also have the telemetry project, which helps the water and sewer fund, or water and sewer services and those enterprise funds, as well as the possible down the road of the SCADA project. I always forget the, what that acronym means, but it's a computerized system that ties into the-
Some kind of analytical data, something.
For the water, water and sewer utilities. So this tower will help make those projects possible. Also, it's just a benefit to the consumers in the community that may currently have T-Mobile service or may be moving to T-Mobile service in the future. So there's a number of advantages to it. It has already been to the planning commission. And in this case, under our codes, the planning commission has the final review, and they did review and approve the project. We've been working with the T-Mobile representatives on the lease agreement and the arrangements for the tower. I did put the planning commission staff report in your materials, and there were some, I don't know if you got the color version of the photos or not, but there were some very nice color photos that.
We got the black and white.
Yeah, yeah, I should have, I'll tell, remind Robin next time.
We're low on the totem pole.
Yeah, the council is, they always get the color photos.
She's saving money.
You can call her in my office if you wish to come see him.
That'll give you a, an idea of what it will look like.
I love your office. Little fish.
But anyway, we, like I say, the, the lease is pretty much completed now. The project's been approved at the planning commission level. Deputy City Attorney Martha Rice took a look at the lease agreement from a legal perspective and found it to be acceptable. And really, what I'm just asking for tonight is for the council's authorization to allow me to execute the lease agreement. T-Mobile wants some kind of public record of the fact that this has gone to the council, and the council is authorizing the city manager to be the signatory on the agreement. So if you're agreeable to that, that would be our recommendation. And we would like a polled vote, again, assuming that you're okay with moving forward, just so that we'll be able to give them the minutes record of tonight indicating that the council took that action. And that concludes my report.
Did the planning commission have any, any public concerns about the height of the tower?
No, they did not.
Okay. Good.
No public concerns were voiced?
No, if I remember correctly, the only person to show up was the applicant at the meeting. So we assume everybody else was okay with it.
And do we have any input from our neighbors?
Here's a neighbor right here.
Well, the county is right there.
Yeah, the county.
We did?
We did. One input. Michelle, I forgot. The ambulance, Delarque ambulance had a concern that it might interfere with their, with their signal, because they have the ambulance service right there. And the person from T-Mobile assured them they would not. It's a different frequency. But they also gave us assurances that if, that if there was any type of interference, they would put filters on that antenna so that there'd be no interference at all. So we have that in, in our record. And the ambulance, Mr. Sandler was satisfied with that. He said, fine.
Okay, good.
Did, did they talk about the direction up there, the compass for the birds?
Well, I was, I'm surprised there weren't any comments about birds.
No more early closed sessions.
Okay. Any public comment, Mr. Miles?
I hope this time you listened to me, Kelly.
Just because I'm not looking at you does not mean I'm not listening to you.
Okay. I didn't intend planning commission on this one. I wish I had. I have a concern. I'm not against progress, and we already have a tower there. But I do have a concern. Did anybody ask this company if they were going to hire what is known as an environmentalist health scientist? Because of, my understanding, when you have cell towers, they emit alpha radiation. Do you know how far that tower is away from the Boys and Girls Club? I could throw a rock that far. You know, sometimes we have businesses coming into town, and they want to put up towers. I'm not against that. But this is another example, and Richard Adne and the other guy, he'll like me about this. Why don't we put them all in the same place? We got a big tower behind Safeway. What we do, we stick it in a commercial residential area. You know, least it's not going to be tall enough to fall on Donna's house. But what about the neighbors? Here's another example of somebody coming into town, I want this, and people not asking questions. Alpha radiation is more dangerous than Donna's fluoride issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Mr. Adne?
Richard Adne, I'm a resident at Crescent City, and as a planning commissioner, I take that job very seriously. I didn't specifically ask the gentleman from T-Mobile about the issues of radiation. However, the antennas that are up there now are old. This new antenna has to meet all FCC regulations. They're modern. And they're right next to tall buildings that the county has, who has their own antennas on there. In fact, the county may want to put their antenna on the new city antenna for their emergency operations because it's a greater height and could, could help with their emergency OES program if they want to do that. And those antennas are perfectly safe. This has been going on for years and years, and they're perfectly safe. They have to meet all the requirements. I was thrilled that T-Mobile was coming to town, because I remember at our last earthquake four years ago, when people tried to call out of town and all cell lines were busy. Now we have another tower, another business that came into town, another cell business. And so people have that much more phone space to use airways. The tower is completely safe. There's no questions about it. There was no, residents didn't come. There's only a few houses there. But it's completely safe. Thank you.
Can I ask Richard a question, Mayor? Are there any test data that can show it's completely safe?
I'm just going on what the federal communications and the government says that it's safe.
Oh, well, they also say fluoride is safe too.
What's that?
Federal guidelines also say fluoride is safe too, and.
And I happen to believe it is. I mean, if I'm going with what my government says, that's all I'm going on. I don't have any data that says that it's not safe.
All right. Well, before I vote on this, I want some test data to see if it's safe or harmful.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment, bring it back to the council.
How much would we rent space for, Rod, if, if another agency may want to use this tower?
Yeah, we're working on that. I'm thinking to maybe make it equal to what we pay the county for dispatch services. That'll even it all out.
You read my mind.
Right. Mr. Plack is.
The dispatching we don't get?
Don't go there. Don't go there.
Sorry.
I want to do tit for tat now.
It's okay. I already made my formal request for information today. Okay.
Mayor?
Yes.
I had a couple of questions.
Yes.
The, the large tower behind Safeway, is that, I've heard it referred to as the old Stamps Tower. Is it?
Are you talking about the one on the Fairgrounds property?
No, the one behind Safeway.
It's actually.
It's a cell site?
Yeah.
I didn't hear what Bob said. I'm sorry. I don't know whose tower that is.
Behind the theater, I believe.
Cell tower behind, actually, it's behind the cinemas. That's a cell site.
Okay. Do we know the height of that?
I don't know. It's close. Looks like it's 100 feet to me. It's pretty tall. But I don't, I don't know the exact height.
So the, the first question that came to my mind was, why aren't we proposing to piggyback that, other than creating a, a revenue generator, which makes sense? I mean, it's, it's, it's a curious thing, because if, I would venture to say that if private developers.
I think, I think I can semi-answer your question. A current cellphone service is probably not going to be cooperative with a new cellphone service using their tower. I'm just guessing.
Yeah, that's probably a part of it. And they seem to, it was interesting, they seemed to know exactly what they wanted. I mean, they, they targeted for what they need for their coverage. They had identified our corporate yard as being right in a key area for what they needed. I don't know enough about the technology to, to explain why that was so important, but.
Back when we were talking about the wind energy and the variables associated with that, there were several people that complained about the visual blight that was in this community originally with the antennas on people's homes and rooftops before the onset of cable and, and new technology. So it took several years to deal with that as, as visual blight, if you will. And, and I would venture to say that if a private sector developer or maybe Mr. Rumiano wanted to do a 100-foot tower, there might be considerable resistance to it. That, that, because it does represent visual blight, it's, it's curious that in traditional communities on the East Coast and in Europe, the concept of a vertical campanile was a point of reference about which a town or a community was developed and oriented. It was a point of visual reference as you moved around the community. In the 21st century, now the visual terminus, instead of being an obelisk or the David or something, it's, it's a communications tower.
Could we make it look like the Eiffel Tower?
They do make it look like trees.
So in, in some, in some terms, it's an abstract man-made tree.
I wasn't advocating it.
But maybe this would be a good first art project to look at how we could turn something that on some level represents a visual liability to the community. On the other hand, at 100 feet high, as you move around, it will absolutely be a considerable point of reference. And, and then, just from a, a technical standpoint, I didn't see if the telephone tower behind the cinema has an aviation- behind the cinema has an aviation hazard light on top, but I would say that'd probably be worthwhile considering. I didn't see a reference to that in the drawings. On projects in the past, 100 feet or more, you usually have, have aviation...
Yeah. Yeah, the, the FCC and the FAA have to approve the, the construction.
T-Mobile had to get assurances from the FAA, it's not in the flight path. T-Mobile also put up the tower at the fire district on Washington Boulevard. That's their tower, and they had to get permission from FAA. They're just expanding their coverage to cover the rest of the, the city suburban area. That's their tower. Well, now it belongs to the fire district, who are leasing out those, those antennas there.
How tall is the tower at the fire hall?
You know, I don't think it's, I don't think it's 100 feet. It looks like it's more like 60 or 70. Yeah, it's not 100 feet.
So anyway, I mean, I've, I've been on the, the flights coming into town when, when you made four or five attempts to land in the fog, and when you came through the fog, you hoped you were somewhere close to the runway. And, you know, I'm just thinking of this tower sticking up there 100 feet. It's not in the glide path, but it's, it's in the, in the neighborhood, if you will. And then I was...
I'm sure there's some restrictions on having to have some kind of, of light. I know we do on our tower at the Fairgrounds.
Okay, and then I was, in reviewing the drawings, I didn't see any consideration for a lightning strike rod or cable, which would be an important consideration. And then if, I don't know, it doesn't define if, in the drawings, if the towers, I think it's made out of steel, but it doesn't identify if it's galvanized or if it's powder-coated, painted. And over time, that's going to be an, an issue as to how it will weather in the elements.
Did you guys address any of that at the planning level? No? Okay. Thank you. Well, those are good points. Ms. Rambo?
I believe I included a condition of approval that it be maintained. I, I can't remember for sure if I did, but I usually do, I add a condition that everything shall be maintained in a good-looking condition, basically.
Any others?
Yeah, and they're, they're relegated by, regulated, sorry, by federal government as well, so they have to, they have to comply with all of the FAA, the, well, whatever other organizations, I can't remember the name of right now.
FCC.
FCC, thank you. So they're, they are, they are regulated pretty heavily.
Is there a time deadline on approving the proposed lease agreement?
As soon as possible. Ideally, they would like to have the signed lease by the end of March, which is why I timed it for this meeting, because we don't have another meeting until April 5th. What we could do is...
I don't see any of those conditions, by the way.
What we could do is ask representatives from T-Mobile to address the, the concerns of Mr. Slert.
I mean, they're relatively minor.
Yeah.
They should be addressed.
I'm going to move that we approve and authorize the city, the city manager to execute a lease agreement with T-Mobile West Corporation for a new communications tower at the city's corp yard based on requirements of lighting, what, what it's made of, lightning rod, and maintenance.
One second, Dan.
I would like to amend that, actually.
You can't, you cannot amend a motion, however, you can make a new motion and see if it survives a second.
Well, maybe I can do this another way. I'm just concerned about the proposed use will not be detrimental to the public health safety or general welfare, according to the architectural review, and I'd just like to see, be satisfied that that's accurate.
What would you like to see? I'm not sure how to...
I'd like to be assured that there is test data that shows that it's not detrimental to the public, because I live right there.
Right, but test data, data of what?
That any radiation or...
Are you talking to Mr. Plack?
No, I'm actually looking at Rich and Kirk.
Oh, okay.
But, Madam Mayor, I think we need to be concerned whether or not there's any detriment to the public health.
So, is this actually within her 500 feet of her residence?
That's a good question. I don't have my map with me today, this evening, I mean, it shows the...
It would be?
Yeah.
So how do we deal with that, Mr. Black?
It would be, is that what you said? Say it would be. Would it, I mean, it's, it's for a block and a half?
Yeah, a block and a half, right.
Well, I think if that's the case, then I, I think that Councilwoman Westfall is disabled from participating. She can, she can go to the podium and address the body as a member of the public, but then she has to recuse herself and actually leave the dais and leave the room. But she is, she is allowed to express her concerns.
Yeah. Just a moment. Okay. Would have been nice to know that in the beginning. I didn't even think about that.
Yeah, me either.
Well, why don't you go ahead and come to...
I think I've already expressed my concerns, and at this point, I should recuse myself.
Yeah, thank you.
Just for clarification, though, it is, it is a permissible motion to amend. And what that would do, under Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which you've adopted, that would have changed the motion, it would have required a second.
And my understanding of Rosenberg's Rules is that you can make a second motion, and then I take, if there's a second on this, that second motion, I take a vote on the second motion first.
Yes, and that's, that's if it's a substitute motion, but there is, I'm, I'm actually looking at them now, Rosenberg's Rules.
You can actually amend someone else's motion when it's on the floor?
No, you have to get a, you have to get a second and have a vote to amend the, to amend the motion.
I'm happy with the FCC's...
But the bottom line is, it's not, it's not important, that was just a matter of information. It, it didn't happen in this case, so...
Well, no, but I gave her wrong information, even though she can't participate now that we know, but...
Yeah. That was slightly incorrect, yeah.
So you can actually amend somebody else's motion?
Yeah, you have to make a motion to amend the motion on the floor.
And then get a second?
And you have to get a second.
And you don't take a vote on the first motion?
If the motion to amend is defeated, then you take a vote on the first motion.
Okay.
If the motion to amend succeeds, then you take a vote on the first motion as amended. And it's, it's a difference between, a substitute motion is, is completely different, and a motion to amend is just a tweak to what...
Since we don't have a second motion or a substitute motion, I call for a question.
Yeah.
You know, if it's an issue that was within 500 feet of my house, I would have paid a little more attention when it was a planning commission.
Well, how is she supposed to do that?
It's published.
You know where this is?
Okay. All right, so I have a motion on the floor.
And a second.
And a second. Mr. Roberts, if you'd like to come forward, just 30 seconds, real quick.
Based on my years in the CATV, cable TV business, the problem of radiation, electromagnetic radiation, et cetera, is not from towers. You get far bigger zaps from the cellphone that you have against your ear, which causes probable tumors, brain cancer, all kinds of nasty things. The wiring in your bedroom is probably more dangerous than the electric clock that's glowing next to your head. Radiation off this tower is not an issue. There are also required by FCC lightning rods and grounding, and they need to ground all their own equipment, so, you know, it's in their best interest to make sure it's totally grounded. Thank you.
Right. I think all of those concerns have been addressed, it's just probably not real apparent. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Burns.
Let me think, yes.
Councilmember Murray. Yes. Councilmember Slert.
Yes.
And Mayor Shlong.
Yes, thank you. Thank you.
Mr., Chief, Chief Plack, he wants to get up, and could you bring in some cool air, please? It's like, is there, is it warm in here?
It is.
Yeah, it's been warm in here all night.
Eight degrees when I walked in the building.
It's nasty.
Just planning, if you could always keep in mind the 500-feet thing so that we don't start the discussion, I mean, for the council members. Well, yeah. Thank you. Moving on to number 18. Consider and approve a merit pay plan which the council would prefer to call a performance-based pay plan for contract employees and take action as necessary and appropriate. It's my understanding, Rod, that this is coming to us because the other employees' associations have this in place, and the only use that we would have for this is if a, an employee has been maxed out on the pay schedule, because there's a range, and let's say they've maxed out, and it's been 10 years since they've been maxed out, this would be the only ability of the city manager to provide them with a performance pay. Is that correct?
You could amend the proposal to include, to specifically include that. Right now, as it stands, we don't have any requirement in any of the merit pay provisions that a person has to be at their top step.
Oh, okay.
Including the three groups that already have one. But the, the council could certainly choose for the department head positions to make that requirement, that you would only be eligible for a merit pay if you were at your top step. Fine with us.
Hmm, okay. Something to think about, I guess. One more thing. I guess I lost my merit pay for the night.
Yep. You blew it.
I know. It's an inside joke. Okay. You want to go ahead and present?
Sure.
Your side of the story?
Sure. Yeah, Mayor...
Since mine was incorrect.
Friday afternoon, Nick Grooby and I got together and decided that this, this town is just too sleepy, we need some controversy, so I decided to put this merit pay plan on the agenda. Nick wrote a, a, and I'm not going to blame him, because I know editors get involved and there are space limitations, but kind of a partial reflection of what we were talking about, and a lot of brouhaha ensued. But let me go back and try to explain exactly what the proposal's all about, and then obviously the community and council can comment on it and make their decision. For a long time, going clear back to the early to mid-'80s, as far as we can tell, the, three of the employee groups in the city have had a merit pay program. That would be the Crescent City Employees Association, which is basically public works, parks, water sewer employees, the Crescent City Clerical Employees Association, very small group, office employees, housing authority employees, and the Crescent City Management Employees Association. So they had a merit pay plan in place for a long time. Back in January of last year, 2009, CalPERS came in and did a routine audit of the way that we administer our CalPERS retirement benefits and system in Crescent City. I know I've mentioned before, but I just, I always like to clarify, it was not an audit, as far as we know, that was generated by any kind of problems or reports of irregular activities. It was something that CalPERS does routinely for agencies that are part of their system. And one of the requirements, one of the findings they made, one of the requirements that they imposed on the city was if we wanted the merit pay plan that we had in place to be PERS-eligible, which means that the merit pay that the employees would receive would count toward their pension calculation, we had to make some major changes to the way that program worked, because it was not really, the old system was not tied to specific performance evaluation goals, specific scores on your performance evaluation. It was very subjective, based on the supervisor's analysis. And PERS said, "We can't make you change that system, but we can tell you, if you want that merit pay to be eligible for, as part of your pension calculation, you have to make it conform with our system." So we came back to, actually, it was about a two- or three-month process, we went to each of the employee associations. And I remember at this time, the department heads are totally out of the picture, they had never had this type of a system. And that the Crescent City Police Officers Association, which is our fourth employee group, has never had this particular plan and hasn't requested it. So we went to the three employee groups, we explained this whole process to them, explained what the PERS audit had said, and over a course of, like I say, probably two to three months, they all came to agreement with a new type of merit pay plan that would comply with the PERS requirements and be a lot more tightly structured and based on performance evaluations, based on specific scores and achievement of goals, and one year at a time type of a format, rather than you get a merit pay of 5% or 10% in 1990, and you're still getting it 10 or 15 years later, regardless of how your performance has changed over that time, which is, from my understanding, the way the old system worked. The new system is every year, you're evaluated, and you either get, you know, you may be eligible for a performance, a merit pay, if your performance warrants it during that year, and it's for that one year only, it doesn't go on forever. So the council was presented with those changes. I got the date finally, I was talking to council members over the weekend, it was August 17th, the August 17th council meeting. We came to the city council with the staff report, presented all of that. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion, I don't think, at that time, and the council did approve those changes that applied to, again, Crescent City Employees Association, Crescent City Management Employees Association, and that's not department heads, that's kind of mid-management level, and then clerical employees of Crescent City. So the proposal that is before you tonight would take this new revamped merit pay plan and apply it to our seven contract employees, and those are the department heads or the directors. And it would be the same kind of a setup where it would be one year at a time, a lump sum for that year, rather than you get it this year and then you get it five years later, or five years on the end of the future without any changes or without any continuing performance objectives being met. It would only apply, it would only be strictly related to your performance evaluation goals and your achievement of certain rankings on those goals and, and on your performance. And it would be, it would have to be signed off by the city manager, and it would not be an automatic thing at all. It would have to be, so that, again, the impressions I've heard from the, the people that kind of read the article and, you know, reacted, were that this was some kind of an automatic pay raise for all the department directors, and that, that's not the intent at all. My intent would be to use it very, in a very limited way, for, particularly for long-term department heads who have reached the top of their salary range and continue to perform very well over time, continue to meet their goals, continue to meet their objectives, perform at a high level, but there's nowhere for them to go financially because they are maxed out in their salary range. So that's the, the background and the intent of it, and it's obviously something that the council, you know, needs to discuss and decide and see if you agree with it. I, I don't intend, I understand the sensitivity of, you know, the budget situation and the economy, and the only intent on my part was to...
Make it fair across the board.
Yeah, make it a fair playing field, but these other three employee groups have had it for years, they have... They have had the revamped PERS blessed program since August, when you approved it. And this would just simply make them eligible for that same program. And that concludes my report. Thanks for the time to kind of give the background on it and we'll answer any questions that you may have.
Well, I'd just like to say that one of the, you know, examples, you know, because I obviously have talked to Rod about this and asked for some explanations. First of all, I think it's fair that all employees are on the same playing field. But as an example, you know, we have a department head that has been at the top of the pay scale for quite a long period and they've met extremely high performance ratings within their department and they've been recognized outside their department for their performance. And yet, we have nothing in place that can recognize that that person's doing a fantastic job for the city and saving the city money based on that performance. So to me, when he explained that to me, it made sense. So I'm going to open it up for discussion with the council. Ms. Westfall, do you have anything?
Yes, I'm just opposed to this because of the economic climate. I think right now, our employees need to be very grateful that they still have a job and continue to do the fine job that they're already doing.
Mr. Burns?
Yeah.
Yes.
The, as I understand it, we already have merit pay in the city. We, and we, it's nothing new. It's not going to impact the budget. And this has been in place for the other groups for 15, 20 years. Is that not correct?
Yeah, the old system goes back, we think, as far as we can tell, to the early '80s.
So, so this is just the ability now for this new group to be able to calc, report it on their PERS as income to help them in their retirement? Is that correct?
That's right. And to make it a more closely managed administered system where...
Instead of automatically.
Right.
Yeah.
I like what Rod has implemented in that if they get, if someone were to get an increase based on their performance, it's just a one-time, you know, it's not something they get continual year after year. This is now just a one-time payment. Whereas before, in previous administration, back in the '80s and '90s, the council allowed the city manager to allow that payment to be made year after year after year, whether or not their performance was as great as it was when they got the pay raise, so. Catherine?
At first, I didn't understand and recognize what this was either. And so I talked to a few people in the community and then I finally talked to Rod yesterday and then I got more detail from him. And then he brought this memo to us tonight from last August and then all the pieces kind of fit together. So it does make sense now. And it is, it's just making it fair across the board. So it's not something that we're doing that would be unfair to the other employees. In fact, this was, this was actually kind of unfair to this particular group of employees. So it makes sense to me now and it's performance-based and it's tied to particular goals that are set, so it would be evaluated. It's something that PERS had recommended, right?
Yes, definitely. Or did it have?
So it's not something that was an arbitrary suggestion that is an internal thing that we thought we should do. It was based on what CalPERS suggested that we do. So I think that we should follow their recommendation and do it.
And to follow up on what Catherine said, what I appreciate most about you is that you've actually given your department heads goals. And I don't think that's happened in a while. So, and what I, what I get out of that personally is something that I'm passionate about and that's my town hall process. And we took, you know, a set of 25 goals from our community and you've assigned those to your employees and your department heads to, to follow up on and make happen. And you're making them achieve what the community want, you know, stated was their priority. So I just appreciate that. And so if there is any performance pay, you know, it's going to be based on them doing what they've been, you know, given as a goal, so.
And Nick joked with me during our conversation of, you know, what's the goal? To show up to work on time. It's not mundane stuff that would be expected. These are, with each department head, it's anywhere from six to 12 or 13 specific goals that may even take more than one year to complete. So we break it down into, I mean, like, you know, Jim Barnes, the Front Street Project, you might break that down into have the design completed by X date, have the project package for bid by X date. So, you know, these are major projects. Many of them came out of the town hall process and many of them are just things that are, you know, every bit, they might be more internal to the city organization, so they weren't the kind of things that were talked about at the town hall process, but they're every bit as important. So I did want to clarify that, that it's not just mundane, you know, keep your pencil sharp.
Keep your nose clean. Charles?
I also originally had some questions or reservations about it. And for me, there was the term merit. To me, it sounded more subjective. And I actually prefer the term performance. And to me, I mean, I think all of our department heads are expected to do a, an exceptional job and I believe they do an exceptional job. To me, this is about recognizing something or someone who has made a very special commitment above and beyond and, or a special achievement for the city. I'll give you an example. A department head you could sit down with and have some basic goals and they could, because of their knowledge of their position and opportunities, they could be very creative and come back and make an exceptional recommendation or accomplishment that might save the city hundreds of thousands of dollars or millions of dollars because of their creativeness and their familiarity with the, with their scope of work and leadership. So to me, it was about recognizing a very special achievements. And it's bringing these managers current with the rest of the staff from a CalPERS standpoint, so I think that's appropriate. It's at the discretion of the city manager. City manager answers to the council. And I think we have to have complete confidence in our city manager to do the right thing. He has the big picture and we're working with a considerable deficit that he's cognizant of and we're cognizant of. And we've had the assurance that this is not going to impact the general fund. And in fact, it's our intention and his intention to have a balanced budget. So all those things said, I think it's a positive thing.
Also, one of the things too is, you know, I like the, I like the way that Charles summed up that, you know, this is for someone that goes above and beyond. And I think accomplishing their goals is part of their job. And so it doesn't necessarily always mean they're going to, you know, be up for a performance increase. But I know we've had employees that have done just an outstanding job of documenting things in certain situations that have ended up saving the city a lot of money. And that, to me, is, okay, so if they're at the top of their pay, pay scale and they've been there for a while and yet they're doing these phenomenal things that are, you know, moving the city forward and saving us money, then we need to recognize that because our employees are our biggest asset. So, okay, public comment. Mr. Burlake. Good evening, sir.
Yeah, I left it there on purpose. I'm Jack Burlake. I'm a member of the city and was one time a council member, but I'm watching you people with amazement. I think you're doing a great job at sharing your burdens and your problems and sorting things out. I came here on this matter because I'm concerned with the fact that the description I've just heard here doesn't match Exhibit A very well. It makes it a mandatory 7% of hours. And these aren't hourly people. Here, you're trying to essentially put the executive suite into the union hall, if you use this Exhibit A. Secondly, they talked about outstanding, above and beyond. I heard words like that here, some way to reward them. But Exhibit A says exceeds standards and is outstanding. And I agree with Mr. Slert that exceeding standards is supposed to be what's done. And certainly, this thing would qualify, would say, and it had me feeling outraged, it would qualify anyone who meets all the standards automatically getting a 7% raise and then saying in the body of this thing that it won't change the salaries, which of course, so to me, I said 7%, I meant 5, is a change. Now, you're having difficulties, folks, in the budget. And I realize this is only seven people. It isn't going to make or break the budget of the city. But Doug, on it, on this one instance, you've got a contract. Follow it. Now, if you can find a way to reward these people outside the contract, it isn't here. And I'm also concerned because there is a little thing called the Constitution of the, of the state of California, which in Article 11, Local Government, Section 8, reads subsection A, "A local government body may not grant extra compensation or extra allowance to a public officer, comma, public entity, comma, or contractor after service has been rendered or a contract has been entered into and performed in whole or in part." Or pay. Now, I think that that's there to be followed and I think it's there to help people overcome this constant, "Give me more, give me more, give me more" business in a, in a city that isn't getting more to give to the people. And I think you need to figure out some other way, perhaps, well, I can think of a few, but I'm not practicing law anymore, so I won't tell you what they are.
Can I get a copy of that, please?
Sure.
Thanks.
I intended to make all, but I ran out of ink.
That's okay. Thank you. Mr. Miles? Thank you, Mr. Burlake.
I hate to do this, but I'd like to remind Jack, when he served on the city council, he gave Carol Luther a merit raise. If I remember right, he gave Suzy...
Mr. Miles, if you could just direct your comments to the council on this particular issue, not on Mr. Burlake.
Well, the thing is, here we go again. Here we go again, redeveloping the will. The city has done this in the past. I know of three people that were given merit raises in the past, or what I call performance. When I was employed by DOD at the Navy School, twice every quarter, you got performance. At the end of the year, you got your final performance. If you did an outstanding job, you got a performance grant. That means for one year, your pay was X. I was able to do that twice. That's a common, common practice in federal government and the city has done it in the past. The problem is, as I see it, is the argument about can we afford it right now? And I don't think we can. If you guys was a fat hog, I'd say go ahead with this, but you're not. These people are under contract. If they do their job, they get paid. If they don't do their job, they should be kicking you-know-what down the road. And I've seen, since I lived here, contract employees, and I could name them, that had to kick you-know-what down the road.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Pete?
I happen to represent SEIU as a DEVER.
Do you have his name from prior record?
Peter Halls. And...
I'm sorry, could you start over? You represent...
I happen to represent SEIU Local 1000 as a DEVER. And I know all about contracts and we've had ours violated. And I think you should stick to this contract because if you're, if you're, if you're a salary worker, you're under a contract and you have to stick by that contract, no matter what it says. There's a lot of things I don't like in our contract that we have to change, but it's just the way it goes.
Ms. Halls?
I'd just like to point out that there is a huge...
Can you state your name one more time?
Jill Halls, sorry.
Thank you.
There's a huge difference between an employee, a secretary, a clerk, a person that's working hard for their money and can barely begin to meet possibly, and someone who's working for a salary that may own their own business, that has enough of a salary to be doing, there's, like I said, there's a ton of people out there that would love to be city manager, that would love to be, you know, the head of the police department or whatever, that would love to have that job for that money. And I agree that they should be, they should be rewarded for being, you know, good at their job, but necessarily not by money. You already have the contracts with these people and there's other ways to tell people you're doing a good job. There's, there's award programs you could give them, you could give them recognitions, awards, things like that. And it just, just seems like it's wrong. I don't think you were stating that PERS said you should do this, but what PERS said is you should fix the problem that was in place with the employees. They didn't say, "And give all your heads of departments the same merit-based awards." That's not what they were suggesting. They were suggesting that the problem be fixed so that that, that pay that they were getting could be counted as retirement funds, for the retirement funding, right?
Right, we understand that.
All right, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Lonsdale? I'll go on to you next.
Madam Mayor, members of the council...
We're numb from the waist down.
My name is Bill Lonsdale. I live in Crescent City and I would like to thank the council for addressing a number of the concerns that I made evident to you in some earlier correspondence. But I think the point is well-taken, that we need to proceed with caution in terms of spending money at a time like this. And my bottom-line recommendation to you respectfully is that the decision to do this or not to do this may more properly be made as part of your budget review rather than here tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes, my name is John Stetson and I'm resident of the county. As I understand this, I'd like to agree with Mr. Slert. If this is a performance issue, it should be called a performance bonus. But what happens if one of your department heads gets a bonus one year and doesn't the next? If this was a money issue and they're at the top of the ladder, isn't it more probable to leave to go someplace else at that point? Because they encountered a salary or bonus total reduction in take-home pay by the amount of the incentive bonus. We dashed around all the items, but what kind of money are we talking? This gentleman here said it's a potential 7% raise. This gentleman here said it's a potential seven percent raise.
Yeah, five is what-
Five percent? How much would that be if all seven of these people got one? Let's talk the real numbers.
This is public comment, so you're addressing us, yeah.
Point for consideration, okay? The second would be maybe the pay scale ought to be adjusted so that they're not topped out, so there is some incentive within the existing system. I don't know how much you're talking about. I'm going to guess it's over $50,000 an individual.
That's true.
They're contract employees. They're here to do administration. They're here, like Mr. Slert said, to do an outstanding job. If you put goals and objectives together, very good. Power to you. Yes, I believe ultimately, the city manager ought to be able to make the decision on the distribution of these funds. But we ought to first find out, how much might we be talking? And when would those funds be dispersed? Is this for someone who's already had a year in the job, and now they're having their annual review? Or next month? Or commencing with a new review period of one year, so it can be included, quote-unquote, in the contract? For the PERS issue, I think that's a non-starter.
Thank you. Ms. Renia?
Richard Renia, 211 West 7th Street, Crescent City. I always find it amusing when county people try to tell me how my taxes should be spent in the city. But let me go over a couple of things. PERS is a major issue. PERS, thousands of cities in this state follow PERS and belong to PERS like we do. We need to comply with their regulations. It has nothing to do with performance-based pay. We know there's no money there for performance-based pay. The issue tonight is to do PERS, and to implement, you can implement performance-based pays. The city manager should come to the council in closed session if he has an employee that he feels has done an outstanding job in the future and has met the goals and get the agreement of the council. That's one way to solve that. The council should concur with the city manager on those. But tonight is about putting the contract employees on par with the other city, the other three city organizations. And for people to say that that's all the management or the department heads do is administrate, they don't know about the city. Department leaders don't just sit in an office and administrate. I have seen them going out there with their crews, no matter whether it's the police department, public works, planning, they are out there doing things. They're not sitting in an office administrating. We're too small of a city for that. They have to wear many hats as they do their work. I know that they don't have, that every city employee in this city is grossly underpaid, and you're not going to find 100 people that want their job. We're one of the lowest-paid cities in the state of California. However, there's nothing wrong with complying with PERS rules and to having it based on merit pay in the future for those people that deserve it sometime in the future. They're not just administrators, they work out in the field, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Did I miss anybody? Okay, we'll close public comment and bring it back to the council. I just kind of liked the idea of the salary range being expanded. Is that even reality?
Yeah, that's the other easiest option, and it would really just be the council's call as to whether, for those positions where the employee is maxed out at the top of their step.
Well, I know that we did a, like a longevity clause in our CCPOA agreement. I can't, it's too late for me to remember the details, but I know that we put in a longevity clause so that if they were maxed out after, I don't remember, 10 years or 15 years, they could be eligible for some kind of an increase?
Yeah, I'm personally not a huge fan of longevity pay because you can sometimes have employees that are, that have been around for 15 or 20 years that aren't performing nearly as well as someone that's been here two or three years, and yet they're getting this extra money because they just, they have 20 years under their belt. So just philosophically, it's not my favorite thing.
It's a good point.
But we do, you're right, we do have, there are a couple of groups that have, and the CCPOA is one of them, that does have a longevity pay provision. It kicks in at 10 years? 10 years or 15 years?
Well, that particular group, you know, the more experience you have, the less liability. So.
That's true.
Mr. Butler, do you have any idea of order of magnitude of what this would represent? I mean, what we heard was that it was, it would not impact the city budget.
No immediate fiscal impact.
Yeah, and what that means, by the way, because I know that came out of the newspaper article, is just that the action tonight is not to approve a bonus for any specific, or a merit pay for any specific person, it's just to put the program in place. So the idea that all seven people would get it in one year, I think is highly unlikely. I could do some rough numbers, and it wouldn't all be, it would be spread across a number of funds because, you know, you've got someone like a Susie Mendez, for example, who's 100% housing authority funded. Chief Plack is 100% general fund. Some people are, Jim Barnes is kind of a mix of different funds. So it's going to have a different impact on the different funds of the city, but-
For example, let's just, if you look at the, in Amendment 1, the city engineer, director of public works could be paid out of water fund, wastewater. Housing authority would be paid out of housing authority money. City planner, economic development could be paid out of RDA funds. So it's not a hit to general fund. Is that what you're-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. People are allocated to different funds depending on their function.
So three of our, three of our organizations already have a clause in their contracts. Currently, the department head agreement has nothing in there on merit pay.
That's correct. Yeah, they just, they have a range, they have an established range for each position.
Yeah.
And once you've reached the top of the range, then there's-
Right.
Rod, since most private businesses are scaling back or closing their doors, why would the public want to pay more? And another question is, can we lower their pay for demerit? If people take off, if they're sick, if they don't perform, does that take into account? Is that taken into account?
Well, I would say they get fired if they don't perform.
And at a time where so many other cities are cutting back and laying off and firing wholesale employees and then rehiring them at, what, a third of their salary? Is this wise? And when people on social security and fixed incomes are not getting a cost of living increase, I just think the timing is wrong to go forward with this.
I mean, it's, I think Mr. Butler's made it clear that this is not a wholesale, across-the-board merit, performance enhancement or bonus. I think it's an unusual case, and it would have to be brought to us ultimately. It's just a matter of having the paperwork in order, if you will.
It's a policy we're setting. It would be a policy that we'd-
Rod, if, oh, sorry. If, let's just use a make-believe number, someone's making 50 grand, and we give them a 5% one-time performance, maybe a pay increase approximately at 10:00 PM, how much would that be?
Well, I just ran the numbers on the gentleman's question. This would be a little bit on the high end, but I took our seven department heads at, roughly averaged out what the seven make, took that to get a total salary figure, broke that down to 5%. So if they were all, if all seven were getting it in any one given year, it would be $28,000 total impact, and general fund impact would be probably half of that, 14,000, 16,000. So.
And how often have we, have we, do we give these performance pay? I mean, what's the track record?
Yeah, we never have for the department heads because they've never had the program. I can tell you that of the old system that is now-
Null and void.
Yeah. There were probably 20 or 21 employees out of 70 full-time employees that had some kind of merit pay that, you know, it may have been, and that was the problem, you know, it may have been given 12 years ago, but it, they kept getting it. So, you know, that includes everyone over the period of time. It wouldn't include people that may have had them and have now retired. But I had a, as we went into this whole process last August, I had Laura total out for me, who all are getting some kind of merit pay under the old system, and it was about 20, 2021.
And that was an accumulation over years?
Right. Yeah, so I think that's what I'm, the point is, I don't think it's been, even though I had some concerns about the old system, and I'm glad we're on the new system now, I don't think even under the old system, it was something that was being horribly abused in terms of the total volume. There may have been some question-
You're looking at between 1980 and 2010, you had 20 pay increases out of 70 employees over 20 years.
Right. And another thing that may be of interest is that of the seven department heads now, only two or three are at the top step of their range. So that's not a, there are still at least four, four or five that have room to grow within their existing range, and quite a bit of room. So I wouldn't see myself using it in those cases at all.
Good to know.
Again, I think it's been identified that it's a tool. It's not an automatic thing on any level. And I think the thing that impressed me the most was Mr. Butler is absolutely as cognizant of the budget and the deficit as we are, and he's fully committed to delivering a balanced budget. So to me, he needs to be able to perform his functions, having the big picture, and this is a tool for his discretion as he sees fit.
We could set the policy for him.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we discuss at the last council meeting that if the sewer rate rollback was voted in, that there would be cuts all over the place? We might even be facing bankruptcy?
That's, that's true.
Okay.
We're going to have to put a budget together for July that assumes that that's not going to happen. And, you know, obviously, we're thinking ahead down the road to what is our response if the measure does stay on the ballot and, you know, it does get a majority vote, we've got to look at the worst-case scenario. But for, all I can do for July 1st is, you know, hope and assume that our revenues are going to be in place and-
Right.
And we're looking at a, we're currently looking at a deficit, but we're also committed to, even though it may, you know, involve some tough choices that the council will have to make, we're going to give you, put you in a position to where you can have a balanced budget and give you a variety of options as far as how to get there.
So with that, I'm going to make a motion to approve your provision for the merit plan.
I would offer the possible change of the term merit to performance.
I'll amend my, my motion to call it a performance. Because I'm an optimist, too, and I feel like the city will still be alive.
And right now, there's no immediate fiscal impact.
No immediate fiscal impact.
Right now. There could be.
I think if there is, it's going to be pretty small.
Yeah, no, I've got no plans to do an immediate performance increase under this plan. It's just basically getting the plan in place and having it there available, since the other three groups are as well.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Yeah.
One second.
Did you?
No. Charles did.
Thank you. Okay. Well, and I'd just like to note that should Ms. Westfall's initiative be successful, we'll have a lot more serious issues to be dealing with, like not providing you with public service, or public safety, or firemen, or, you know, laying off half of our staff, or not cutting the grass in the park, or not having a pool open for our children, or a whole number of scenarios, so. We won't have any employees to give performance raises, too.
That's right. But that one, that's not going to happen. Could you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
Mayor Shalom?
Yes, thank you.
Thanks for your patience tonight, Nick. Number 19, consider and approve a resolution entitled Resolution 2010-7.
Yes, ma'am.
What? Oh. A resolution of the City of Crescent City expressing the city's policy with respect to individual council members incurring charges by city contractors. Mr. Black?
Mayor, this is a cost-control measure. I think it's pretty self-evident. It's consistent with what the municipal code says about individual council members giving direction to city staff. Basically prohibits that and requires them to go through the city manager's office, and this likewise would have the same effect with respect to outside contractors of the city.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I have a couple of comments. For me, it's about fiscal accountability and control. And I think it's good to have a resolution like this that protects the best interest of the city.
Catherine, anything done? I concur.
Fine.
Yes, I just urge the council not to adopt the resolution because it violates the California Public Records Act.
In what way?
I can't explain anymore because the matter is currently in litigation.
This matter's in litigation?
The matter concerning Public Records Act.
The Public Records Act has nothing to do with this.
I've said what I have to say.
Okay. This is, I'll just clarify for Ms. Westfall's knowledge, this resolution is the city's continued effort to control costs and to make very clear that requesting something from an employee of the city and/or a contractor that is engaged to do business with the city is not allowed. It either comes before this entire body to incur a cost, or, well, basically, that's how it should be done. We give direction to the city manager as a body and not as a sole individual. So as an example, if I have a concern with something being done in that beachfront park, I myself cannot call Rod and say, "You go out there and you stop that, you know, da-da-da-da-da." That's not my job. Although, but I can in turn turn around and bring that to the council and say, "This is what's happening. I think we should address it. This body as a whole can vote to direct Rod to change what's happening." That's just a very general example. I cannot myself go to Bob Black and ask him to analyze a situation and come up with a memo regarding any topic. That has to come from this body as a whole, and that's all this is stating. This is just reinforcing what our ethics code and what our city policies are.
Mayor, if I might just address in a general sense, because I'm not positive what Councilwoman Westfall's referring to, but in a general sense, the relationship between this resolution and- between this resolution and public records is basically the following. If a contractor of the city is in possession of a public record, it's still up to the individual that wants to see that record to make their request through the city manager. And then the city manager would procure or direct the contractor to do what it takes to produce that record. So I don't think it, I don't think it's ever been the scenario that members of the public can freely go to people that work for the city as contractors, let's say Willdan or Stover Construction or Walland, and directly demand documents from them. I think the Public Records Act requires that the request be filed with the public agency. And to do, if it was any other way, it would be just sheer chaos.
Sure.
Because any, any member of the public, uh, anywhere in the United States could make requests directly to city contractors. So, um, you know, I, I don't think this is inconsistent, and it's certainly not the intent to constrain, uh, the Public Records Act or make this city less responsive than it should be.
No, the only thing it's doing is constraining one council member out of five from giving direction to city staff and/or city vendors and/or contractors.
Yeah, I think
That has to be done as a body.
Yeah. What you meant to say was anyone
Sure.
Council member.
Any coun, that's what I said.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anyway, okay, I'm tired.
Like, we can't just go ask Bob to do research for us.
No, you can't.
As an individual.
Mm-mm.
Yeah.
Right.
I did point out in my memo that the, uh, status of the city attorney is slightly different because the city attorney has both statutory and municipal code duties that are peculiar to the city attorney. And so that makes the job slightly different in very narrow, very limited ways than just another contractor.
Can you give an example?
Well, the city attorney has require, you know, has a requirement, for example, to, um, perhaps, uh, I don't know, investigate, uh, potential violations of the Brown Act that may be independent. If, if an individual, uh, council member brings to that, to the city attorney's attention that there may have been a violation, I think that could trigger an independent obligation of the city attorney. That council member wouldn't necessarily have to go through the city manager. Or if the city manager was involved in something that the, that the city attorney felt he or she should report on to the city council
Mm-hmm.
that would be independent of the city manager's direction.
Right. But at the same time, let's say I came to you and I said, "Hey, Catherine, da-da-da-da-da."
Yeah.
And you felt like, "Oh, gosh, that's pretty serious. I should probably look into that." You would provide all of that information to all of us, not just to me.
Absolutely correct.
Right.
That's why I say it's very narrow. It's not that easy to come up with examples. But the city attorney is one of two, only two employees that work directly for you, the council. And so although I do take direction from the city manager, I'm not exclusively under his direction.
Yeah.
So it's, it's subtle, and it's not, it's not really important for the purpose of this resolution.
Right. Does that make that more clear to you, Ms. Westfall? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Great. Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
Do we have a public comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Mr. Burlake?
This frightens me a little bit because you five people, the city council, are the people that the people look to for answers to things quite often. It's just kind of built into the American feeling of things. You have a duty to find out things. You should have no restrictions on finding out things because you're the person in charge. Now, you've been given, I think, some, um, governmentese when you were told how much it costs, uh, to find certain information in this controversy that's going on among you. I, it, if they just said it took so many hours of a person of such and such a rate and so on, that is not a cost unless they had to hire someone extra to do it, defer doing something that they otherwise would have used for, uh, for the, uh, effort or, in other words, unless they somehow had to increase additional money, it wasn't a real cost. It was an accounting cost only. And the alternative would be not doing the things they're supposed to do when you and your fellow, uh, council members ask for information. You should have no restriction on it, and the idea that it should go through any particular individual puts that individual in charge of what you find out, and that should not be. Now, if you want to curb abuse of this, I first suggest it doesn't happen often, really. I'm assuming we're not talking about someone going down and telling someone to build it over here instead of over there, but what we're talking really is finding out information. Uh, you could well have a house rule, sort of, a, a rule of procedure among your, uh, council that would say, once something has been brought up and the, uh, uh, the word, the Russian word comes to mind, but the American one doesn't, the, and the, and the majority of people think that it has been hashed, that you can do the same thing that you could do to cut off debate when you're in council. And that's the other point, the idea that you've gotta go in a body to find out something, that brings in the, the Brown Act. If you have more than two of them, uh, it destroys any possibility of someone finding out something, uh, without its being filtered by the very people you might want to find the most about. I think that, uh, you're, uh, I know this is brought about because of a perceived abuse of the use of finding out information. But I think, folks, that that's a real poor reason to modify, uh, us, uh, a rule just because you feel that way about it. Now, it happens that in the, uh, municipal code, there are, uh, there's a, a provision relating to the relationship between, uh, the council and staff. And if followed, it's adequate.
Thank you, Jack.
It really is. To add anything, to muddy it up with, is to destroy, is to take off your own arm. Don't deprive yourself of the ability to do your job.
I'm not quite sure you understand the intent of this, but we can talk about that later. Mr. Miles?
Kelly, what I'm gonna say tonight, you may not like, and I really don't give a flying, you know what?
Mr. Miles, please be respectful.
I'm trying to be respectable. What Jack said is the truth. Thomas Jefferson, one of the people that I admire, who founded this country, said that information is a connoisseur. Connor Stone of democracy. What has happened in my community is a person has misused something. She's totally gone about things in the wrong way. But, this is the big but. When a person goes in the, into a ballot booth and marks who they want to run my city, they expect certain things out of these people. They expect you to do certain things. They expect Dennis. Now, Donna Mae, and she's not one of my fans, gone hog wild over something that she shouldn't have had. Catherine, people went in the ballot box and voted for you. Same for Slert. If you people cannot go around and ask questions, you might as well cut off your right arm. But here's how it should work. If a person has a concern, and I, I get how many times when I stay around here till midnight, that each time you guys are here, there's something called City Managers Directives. You people have the responsibility, if you see something, to tell this gentleman to look into it. That's not been happening. If you censored Donna over this, what more do you wanna do? Nobody's recalling her. If I had my way, somebody would recall her. So we wouldn't go bankrupt. But for you to say that she doesn't have the right to ask questions, I believe is a violation of her constitutional rights.
Well, let me clarify. I don't think you understand either.
No!
I, do not yell. Please sit down. Please sit down so I can speak. Thank you. We are not denying anybody the right to ask questions. We are saying that it's improper for one councilperson to direct a member of the staff to do something that this entire body should be making a decision on. It is not proper for one member of this council to go to a contractor and ask that contractor to do something that this body should be making a decision about. I cannot go to Rod as the mayor and direct him to do something individually based on my own opinion. But I No, you have not. But I can go to Mr. Butler and say, "I need to know about the rule for the audit committee cause I'm the chair, and could you give me that information?" That's his duty to give me that information to do my job. I cannot go to him and say, "I want you to change the way you do something," or, I'm, I'm being very gentle cause I'm tired, but, um, the intent of this is, is to remind this body that there are five of us, and we do not give direction, uh, to anybody, um, without a majority if it's going to change any kind of the way we do business. And I, I don't know how to be more clear about that.
Well, it's in the municipal code with respect to all city staff. I don't know when that code section was adopted or who was on the council at the time, but all they were doing is reflecting the city manager form of government.
Right.
That's all that, that's all, that, that language is very standard. No individual council member is entitled to direct city staff. And it's also, this essentially is expanding that to apply to people that are under contract with the city to either do specific jobs or to charge the city by the hour for the time that they are spending on city business. And it is not, uh, I don't think, uh, untoward or improper or any abandonment of your ability to do your job to say that you can't go to a Ward Stover or to a Willdan and say, "Uh, I'm gonna spend the day in your office if you don't mind. I have an arms-length list of questions." That, that, they may be very legitimate questions, but they need to be brought to the city manager or the city council, uh, and get authority to do that. Because when we sign a contract, when we sign a contract with a contractor, we assign that person to do specific things. And then if
And I, I cannot go in and cause the city
Changing the scope of work.
To be billed for my time unless it's something the entire council wants.
I think, uh, Councilman Slert just said it very, very well, is when you come in from the outside on a, something that wasn't contracted for, you are changing their scope of work, and you're altering their whole budget. And you're potentially incurring direct charges for the city that are not budgeted by the city and were not thought to be part of the contract.
Now, if I go into Mr. Butler with a concern, uh, as I know Catherine just did recently, she had a concern, she took it to Mr. Butler. Mr. Butler felt it was important enough to find out the answer, but when he did, he provided that information to all of us. And he, and he let us know that that concern had been raised by Councilwoman Murray.
I think talking to anyone is, I, I, I think talking to anyone in our city is talking. I can, I can address a concern. I don't give direction. I can ask a question, but I don't direct somebody's work. There's a, there's a fine line there. I'm not asking, I don't go to Jim Barnes and say, "I want your last records for the last umpty-um road projects. Please get me those by Tuesday." If I wanna see all the road projects, I need to come in my directives and say, "Rod, I need this information."
And then Rod might say, "Go ahead and talk to Jim."
That's fine. But, but I don't direct Jim. I'm not Jim's boss.
But I bring concerns to Rod all day long about things I hear out in the community.
But you're not directing him.
No. But I'll say, "Hey, so-and-so, you know, brought it to my attention that the curb next to the fire hydrant hasn't been painted. Well, it's supposed to be." You know, so I just bring it to his attention. That's his job to say, "Hey, Jim, go paint the curb." But I don't go straight to Jim and say, "Hey, Jim, go paint the curb."
Yeah.
Just, just a suggestion, please, when considering this subject matter, pass any rule that you pass for the best people on your council, not for, not for the abusers you don't have in general, abusers here. Pass a
I think
If you pass one that you as, as sensible, decent people would be comfortable with, and that ought to include, for instance, "Hey, you're, uh, you just broke the man, the vein in, in front of my constituent's house. Do something about it." Without having to go through, you know. I, I'm thinking, leave room for emergencies and exceptions and make them rare.
Well, yeah, that's up to best judgments, but
That's what you're arguing for, judgment.
Did you have something, Mr. Lonsdale? Okay. Sure.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, Bill Lonsdale again. The concerns that I had about this resolution, uh, and that I conveyed to your council were primarily revolving around whether or not it would be applied equally to all members of the council. But unfortunately, we've created a, an ugly public record here tonight. If that tape were to be played back, uh, there are some comments in there that, that I'm sure the folks who made them wish they could take back. And, uh, right now, it appears to me that this is not a cost-saving resolution, and it is not an equally-applied resolution. The impression that I got from what I've heard from the, from the council tonight is it is punitive and vindictive resolution directed at one of your members, and that's not what it should be. And I would, I would respectfully request that you take a look at the resolution and make sure that it is absolutely clear, and maybe in some clarifying comments, make sure that it is absolutely clear that this is designed to save money. This is designed to centralize tasking. This is designed to be applied equally to all. Thank you.
I, I will clarify very briefly. In the censure that was mentioned on Ms. Westfall, it clarified that she was not to incur debt, basically, on the city's behalf without it coming before the entire council. What we are doing tonight is clarifying that that applies to all of us, not just to her, especially during this economic time. And that's really the, the entire, um, clarifying comment that I have. I'm tired. I'm getting really tired.
You know, interesting what Jack said and even Bill, you know, Doug Plack and his, sergeants and police officers enforce laws not made for people that do the right thing. And you don't post speed limit signs for people that drive sanely. That's my only comment.
Thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, oh, wait, do we have to? Oh, wait, do we have to? Can I get a motion?
Point of divinishing returns here.
On behalf of any city councilperson, I would move that we adopt a resolution 2010-7.
A dash six. We already did six.
You did?
Yeah. Sorry.
I thought this was seven. I was trying to keep track.
Yeah, I'm tired, too. The public hearing, the public hearing on the coastal development permit, actually, we didn't, actually, you know what? We didn't pass that, so this would be six.
It's a resolution of the city council of expressing the city policy with respect to individual council members, plural, incurring charges by city contractors.
Resolution 2010-06 to-
06.
Clarify, because the earlier resolution is pending. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Would you please pull the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Burns?
Yes.
Councilmember Murray?
Yes.
Councilmember Westfall?
No.
Councilmember Slert?
Yes.
And Mayor Shalton?
Yes.
Legislative matters. We have three letters of support. I'm going to explain them briefly so that we can just move forward.
How briefly?
Very briefly. We have a letter of support requested by the Border Coast Regional Airport Authority in support of Assembly Bill 2166. Basically, what that will do is allow the Smith River Rancheria to become a part of the airport JPA. Number B, approval of a letter of support requested by Elk Valley Rancheria in support of their phase-two environmental justice grant application. This is in reference to the south end of the coastal trail area down near their property and working jointly with the city on some planning to create a safe crossing of Highway 101, which will end up down near the resort. It's kind of a way for it to get from that side over to the beach side safely. So, this is just a support of them getting a grant that we would work together with them and communicate on what we'd like to see. And then C is approval of a letter from Adam Wagshel, which is, he's a director of conservation for Humboldt Bay Harbor, and he's just moving forward with the, he'd like us to just provide a letter of support with the socio-economic characterization and risk assessment. Basically, our local working group that's working on behalf of the MLPA. This is a report that they've put together that kind of characterizes our area and the socio-economic impacts of the MLPA as well as the risk assessment. It's got a lot of really good information on it, in it, and they're looking just for a letter of support since we are part of that group. So-
Do we need a motion or a directive?
I think we could get a motion to approve all three, or you could make a motion to approve just one, whatever.
I think you could do all three.
All three. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Who made the motion?
Catherine.
And that's all three in one motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And who seconded that? I'm sorry?
Charles. Charles. Okay. All of us in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, passes five to zero. Reports, concerns, directives to the manager. Mr. Slert?
I'd like to, on behalf of this end of the council, like to extend happy birthday wishes to you.
Yeah. Thank you. Thanks.
Attended the RCTA this past week, I think with yourself, Madam Mayor, and El Tico, and then Elk Valley Rancheria Ad Hoc Committee.
Great. Ms. Westfall?
Nothing tonight, please.
Okay, Mr. Burns?
I think we're closing in on the trees.
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, good.
Yeah, Charles, Charles is-
We even have a gross part.
Suggestions kind of shot down, but at least we got some progress with, with something that one member of the committee recommended, so.
Good. Catherine?
I attended the Local Transportation Commission and the Solid Waste Authority on behalf of Mr. Burns.
Thank you for doing that. I got it down.
I can't think of one else.
The GRC.
The, our, I, GRC, yes.
Okay. I attended the Local Transportation Commission for Mr. Burns, which I was happy to do so. Was able to shove it into my-
Thank you.
My free two hours of the day. No, it wasn't free. I also attended our Solid Waste Management Authority. We're moving forward with a franchise agreement. We've had our original conference with, I think, it was like 11 or 13 interested parties. Since then, those parties have submitted questions, which the authority answered and provided those answers to everybody interested, and it looks like we still have, you know, several that are willing and able and ready to bid on the project, so that's pretty exciting. I think it's really going to be a benefit to the consumer. Attended the harbor's celebration, it was 100 and, 150 years, 100 years?
The Hawaiian Chieftain Celebration.
Oh, I attended that, too, but no.
Well, Scott had said something about they were celebrating some significant milestone.
No. The harbor, well, all I remember is what he said, which was the harbor was actually formed in 1932 or '33.
Thirty-one.
Whatever, 31, whatever that comes out to, that's what they were celebrating. I think it was mostly for the Hawaiian-
I can't even do math in my head right now.
It was mostly for the Hawaiian Chieftain.
Eighty years, okay.
It would be going on, going on eighty years.
Okay, well, we celebrated something really significant at the harbor-
Yeah.
-with free beer and wine, okay?
Whatever it was.
That's what you didn't remember.
Don't forget, the Barrow Boys were there, cooked, they had-
Yes, the Barrow Boys cooked. It was really fabulous. There was, there was probably 100 people there. I was really impressed. They did a great presentation, and the Hawaiian Chieftain came into the harbor, you know, and so that was really nice. And, let's see, I think that is about it for last week. I'm done. Meeting adjourned. Obvious. I've been-